Well, good evening and welcome to the September 27th meetings of the Salem City Council and Housing Authority. We're going to begin this evening with a city council work session on the 2021 Community Satisfaction Survey. So we'll come to order and I'll ask the recorder to please call a roll.
Counselor Stapleton?
I'm here.
Counselor Anderson?
I am too.
Counselor Phillips? Counselor Leung? Counselor Gonzalez?
Here.
Counselor Hoy?
Here.
Counselor Nordike? Counselor Lewis?
Here.
Go back to Counselor Phillips?
Here.
And Mayor Bennett?
Here. All right. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, approval of the agenda, Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move approval of the special meeting agenda.
Second.
Second by Anderson. Any discussion? Recorder, please call a roll.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Stapleton?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Phillips?
Aye.
Counselor Leung? Counselor Gonzalez? Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Nordike? Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Okay, are there any additions or deletions, Counselor Hoy?
No.
Okay. Then we're going to move right into our discussion of the 2021 Satisfaction Survey and Resident Perspective on Infrastructure Need. That'll be sort of two two major topics for this, and I will turn it over to you, Courtney. Are you going to lead this or help us get this launched?
Yes, I'm prepared to start as often. If that's okay with everyone.
Go ahead.
With the mayor and city manager's office, and thank you, everyone, for having us this evening. I'd like to introduce and welcome John Horvick, who is the Director of Client Relations and Political Research with DM, DHM Research. John brings to us decades of national and regional opinion research and experience to Salem. He's been working within our community since 2016, and it is a privilege for me to watch John work and to see the care he shows our community as he's asking all of these wonderful questions that inspire great thought. Tonight, we are reporting out Community Satisfaction Survey results, and this is just a regular part of our annual cycle as we head into your November and January work sessions where we ask you to build your policy agenda for 2022. This informs next year's budget as we're getting started again already for next year. John also recently completed some community conversations about infrastructure condition and funding within Salem. And as time allows this evening, he's going to share a couple of initial themes from that research as well. We intend for you to have a broader conversation about that topic later in October or in November at a future city council meeting. And so with that, I'm going to just turn it over to John Horvick to lead us with a brief presentation and then your conversation and questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Courtney. Mayor Bennett, counsel, it's a pleasure to be back and to be able to share with you what we've been hearing from residents in your community. I'm gonna, if I can, I can, looks like, share my screen. I'm a pollster. We do surveys. We like to show charts and graphs. So I'm going to try to visualize things for you here. Can I just get a thumbs up? Do you see this? Perfect. All right. So what I want to do in the time I got is to walk you through some of the key findings from the Community Satisfaction Survey. There's a full report that goes into a lot more depth than I mean to go through tonight. In particular, that report goes into demographic differences, age, gender, area of the city, things like that, that may be of key interest to you. But here, I'm going to focus primarily on the overall results for the community as a whole. And I did try to sneak in a little bit about the focus groups we just finished up too about the infrastructure bond. So that's what I tend to do.
Right.
Just real quickly to ground you on the survey side of things, this is what we call a hybrid survey. I'll explain that in a second. 400 Salem residents, 400 adults in Salem. A hybrid survey for us means that we're now blending in live interview phone calls with a text-to-online approach where people are randomly selected either by phone to talk to an interviewer or with a text message to take the survey on their phone or their laptop or whatever device. It's really important to reach people multiple ways nowadays to ensure that we're getting the representative sample. Younger people in particular don't answer their phone, and so we need to reach them in other ways. And that's what we've been doing here for Salem and other communities for the last several years. This was conducted in August, so about a month ago, so still really fresh data. It's a 16-minute survey. It means we asked lots of questions. It's about as long as you keep people on the phone nowadays. So we cover a lot of topics and a lot of trend lines that we can point to as well because we've been thoughtful about repeating questions to be able to track changes over time. This was available both in English and in Spanish. We had the highest Spanish language complete this year of our time doing the survey together. Margin of error, 4.9%. Some things might not add to 100 because we round a little bit. If this question was on methodology, I'm happy to answer those in the backside, but just before we dive into things, I want to know what you did. Or we did. So one of the key questions we asked, not just in Salem, but in other communities as well and in the state is just, are things heading in the right direction or are they off on the wrong track? It's a classic question. It's been asked by communities across the country for decades and decades and decades and including in Salem, going back to 2016. Now, the blue, or excuse me, the green line is the right direction numbers. The orange line is the wrong track numbers. And so what's really clear here is that the green line is going down and the orange line is going up. Right, right direction falling, wrong track increasing. That's sort of the trend we've been seeing across the state. So big picture, I'll show you that in a second. And it's true particularly in metropolitan areas. So you'll see here, I threw in some recent surveys we have for the city of Portland. In Benton County, the right direction number recently in Portland is 36%, so a little bit higher than Salem. That survey is a little bit older than Salem's too, several months older, but 36% in Portland. Benton County, though, is 60%. So it's not, it's not every community, every place, all the time. Benton County recently was at 60% right direction for their community. That gives you a sense of where you fall in, but the overall trend line is certainly more negative. We'll get into why here in a second. But just to kind of take a step back, sort of longer picture, DHM's been asking Oregonians, you know, is the state heading in the right direction or off on the wrong track for? Here is two decades long. We've been asking it for longer than that. And you can just see the trend line here. In 2001, 66%. 2002, it fell to 21%. This is right direction numbers. And as we get closer to the time period now, it was as high as 50% in 2014, 40% in 2017, 36% just a couple of weeks ago. So that's my very freshest data point for the state of Oregon, 36%. So you can see it's, the Oregonians pretty much everywhere are in a negative mood right now. There's differences between community, there's difference between the state and the country, but the overall trend is we're in a negative point in time. The big driver in Salem and in Portland and in many communities across the state is concerns about homelessness. So this is a question we've been asking Salem residents going back to 2016. It's an open-ended question. We just asked, what's the most important issue in the city of Salem that you would like your local elected officials to do something about? They can say anything they want. We just listen, then we try to code those, all those answers into categories and see what pops. And you can see homelessness has gone from 77% in 2016 and then a steady march up to the point where it's 58% here in August. It's always, always important to note what's not on the list or what's on the bottom or towards the bottom. You'll see that it's not COVID. I mean, COVID was 4% in 2020. It's 8% now, so it's not nothing, but that's a big gap from homelessness. Roads has fallen. And part of the reason I think that roads has fallen is that homelessness has taken over because we do see concerns about transportation and other places in the survey. But clearly homelessness is driving community concern. In the focus groups, we heard about ways that it touches on all sorts of other issues, particularly crime, at least in community sort of sentiment. This is not unique to Salem. In a recent survey in the city of Portland where we asked the exact same question, 51% of Portland residents said homelessness. So we would also hear similar results in other parts of the state too. But clearly that's what's driving the negative attitudes as much as anything else or more. Another question we've been asking is just overall satisfaction with city services. This is not about a particular city services. This is just like big picture. How are things, how satisfied are you? You can see, if you just isolate 2021 and kind of close your eyes to everything that happened before then, seven out of 10 are satisfied. And that ain't a bad number. To have seven out of your, 10 of your community residents feel good about the services you're delivering is something you should feel good about. Now, however, you can't just look at 2021 because we have previous data points and there is a decline. It's been, it's been in the 90s. It's been in the 90s pretty recently of community members who are satisfied. You can see this question is, has a, you know, very somewhat not to or not at all sort of response category. So you can see the very satisfied has dropped from 44% back in 2016 to 21% now. So it's both overall satisfaction and the intensity of it. Again, 70% is not anything that you should be upset about in and of itself. Seven out of 10 is still good, but definitely a decline from previous years and a 16-point decline from 2020. Again, this is, we have a benchmark from comparable cities. Portland, exactly 70% just a few months ago. So right in line with another large metropolitan community in the state. I don't have a trend line for Portland with the exact same question, so I can't compare that, but at least in 2021, basically on par with another large community. Now, specific services, we also asked satisfaction and what we, what I'll call core services. Obviously Salem does lots of different things, but fire, public safety, water, parks and rec. These are all services that Salem residents give really high satisfaction marks, particularly emergency services, water and storm as well. This is a question we've been benchmarking, and if we, if you look on the right here, this is the change from 2020. Every service that we asked about except for water had a decline from 2020. And you can see where the biggest drops are. Parks and Rec 14 is the largest here. Again, all these have about two-thirds or so satisfaction, so doing well, but a decline except for water and storm from the previous year. Now, these are ones where it's a, you know, pretty satisfied. We see more red on here, but parking, supporting the arts and culture, protecting the natural environment, safety for people walking and biking, the public library. All these have at least the majority of Salem residents saying that they're satisfied. Some have more don't know, particularly the library, but all these have majority satisfaction, but more dissatisfaction. We can see here some of the, we see some fairly large drops. Some of this is no doubt related to COVID. The library in particular, and it hasn't been open. Services have been declined. And so it's not a shock that residents would say, gosh, you know, this isn't the year where I'm most satisfied because I haven't been able to access it. And some of them are maybe less difficult to say have to do with COVID. Safety for walking and biking, for example. At least it's not obvious to me why that would be a COVID-related impact. And then further down towards the bottom, this is where we could, we said, you know, room for improvement. All of these have less than 50% satisfaction. Okay? This is where we get into transportation. I showed you up above that, that overall number of people who are calling out transportation as the most important issue has declined, but it still rates as a low, low satisfaction service in the city. So maintenance for city streets, sidewalks and bridges, enforcement of code, growing job opportunities, definitely going to have a COVID impacts there, and city planning, development and review. I'll call out that maintenance of city streets, sidewalks and bridges, that minus 19% of all the city services we asked about that had the biggest decline this year. So do, do pay attention to that because there are some, again, we could look at that number up above about transportation decline and it's the most important issue mentioned, but we see it the biggest decline year over year in satisfaction. And then the two where we see very high levels of dissatisfaction relate to housing and homelessness. So access to affordable housing and serving the needs of homelessness, 52% are not at all satisfied about serving the needs of homeless. Both of these declined from the last year as well. So, big picture, seven out of 10 satisfied with city services. With some of the key core services, police, emergency services, water, good numbers, although not as good as previous years. And then there's a number of services that I think are connected to COVID, the library, jobs, for example. And then some maybe not as much and do deserve or need extra attention. Couple other things just to call attention to. We've been asking about perceptions of fairness of city services. Are they fair for the city as a whole? Is everybody getting, all parts of the city getting their fair share of services and are they fair for you? There's always been a delta between the two where people think that city services are not shared across the city fairly, but they think that their part of the city is getting fair services. So there's always the perception, that there's a negative perception that extends beyond what they actually are saying about their own neighborhoods or their own parts of the city. It has existed always. There is a decline though, and there has been a decline that goes back to 2016. So there is some erosion about that sense of fairness across city services, both citywide and in your own area. But that delta has always existed. So people, I think, are sensing an unfairness broadly, but again, maybe not for themselves personally. Another question, it had some conversation sort of leading up to the reporter we put together. We have been asking this question about, is it the responsibility to make sure everybody in the community, the community is welcoming to everybody? There was a decline this year. So first of all, 83% of Salem residents said, yes, I agree to that. 57% said, I agree to that strongly. And I know it's an important thing for the community to have residents feel that way and for folks to feel welcome. But there was a decline in 2020, 90% agreed to that statement, 83% this year. That could be random noise. It's just on the mark, the edge of statistical significance. So it could just be some randomness or it could be a sign of a change. Keep in mind, 2020 was historically unique here. And so definitely something to watch and measure across time to see if 2020 was an outlier or 2021, maybe it's a sort of a trend. But I didn't want to call that out for you. And then just to end on the data, on the survey side, on a real positive note, we've been just asking, hey, are you, you got emergency kit ready to go in your household? And there has been a big increase in that. From 2019 to 2021, we've seen a 20 percentage point increase in Salem residents who say that they're prepared, that they have a kit ready. And so continue, there's still work to do, but continue to get that word out. You're making progress and that makes a big impact on people's lives. And then finally, just a few notes about the focus groups around the bond, potential bond measure that we just completed. So I put this in red light, yellow light and green light. So we did two focus groups, 20 residents, likely voters, two-hour conversations about potential bond. From my perspective, no red light. There are some, some concerns that were emerged, but everything in this focus group suggested to me that there's a possibility to get something on the ballot the voters would say yes to. Okay? There are some yellow lights though. When we first asked the question to the two focus groups that we did, they were about split. About half saying, yeah, I'd support that, and half saying no. The reason that those who said no said no is because they weren't sure that there was a need and some distrust of government. And that was a theme that went, rolled through. Some of that's specific to Salem for sure. We articulate that in the full report, and some of it is just skepticism about government that goes beyond Salem, goes beyond Oregon. You know, it's just part of our, our political sort of culture right now. But unsure of need and some, some trust issues. But then there's some green lights. Support for a potential bond measure grew throughout the conversation. And I'd say that there are three big reasons that support grew. One is learning that the potential bond measure would not increase property tax rates, that it would go, as old bond measures or would go off the rolls, this would replace it and so we could keep rates level. That's probably the most important thing that people learned. Second would be learning what it funded. When they learn the types of projects it would fund and it matched what they felt like what their community needs are, particularly with transportation, particularly with the possibility to acquire land for affordable housing and shelters, fire equipment, all real positive things. And then the other was that the types of projects that have been planned, it's part of a larger community planning process. It's not just city hall or the elected officials who are forcing something upon the voters, but community input has been put into it and that there'd be community oversight going forward. Those are the three things that really drove support. With that, I will stop. I'll turn things over to you. I'm available to answer the questions you have or to allow you to continue with your meeting.
Okay, great. Does anyone have, just a sec. Well, wait till you clear the screen. I can't see everybody yet. Does anyone have any questions? Counselor Lewis?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thanks, John. You know, this is one of the consistencies of being on the council for six years to get to, get to hear these. And, and after going over these for six years, this guy tries to make some of his own conclusions. So I want to talk about a couple that I've made.
Sure.
One, under key findings, you say in your report that between 2016 and 2019, there was a steady downward trend in the general mood. When I look at the graph, it looks like there was a downward trend in 2017, but it still put us at 62% of folks thinking we're going in the right direction. Then in 2018 and again in 2019, it dropped what I consider to be dramatically, 25 percentage points in two years. So I think that those two years are significant. And I remember asking after the 2019 survey if there was a way of asking folks, when you ask the question, what direction, asking them, why do you say that? And I recognize it takes a lot of time. There's only so much time, but I think we missed an opportunity there to really identify specifically why there would be such a dramatic downturn. I'm not expecting an answer. I just thought that'd throw out.
I have a couple of thoughts. One, we tried to, one, I think it's clear from the data and other questions in the open end that we did ask that homelessness is the driving factor. So that would be my one interpretation. The other is, we did ask a follow-up question, or if you said things are heading in the right direction, if they said things on the rough, right, or off on the wrong track, we asked, well, is that mostly because of things outside the city's control or things that city could control? Or some combination of the two? Now, most people say it's some combination of the two, but if you look at the the remaining people, most of them say it's the things that the city could control, which is to say, people aren't responding to that question, is that there are broad things happening across the country or the economy or, you know, whatever, that they're just, the city doesn't have influence over. So we tried to get a little bit of that. And then I would say in the focus groups that we had, when we went around the table and just said, what's the most important issue? Homelessness, 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 homelessness.
Right. My other, and I guess it's a comic question. You mentioned in the report, a decreased satisfaction with the maintenance of roads is harder to explain. I've got a, I've got a suggestion for you.
Okay.
The residents that, I'd say 85 to 95% of the residents in Salem get around in their cars on the streets. And I believe there's a sense that we have fallen behind in maintenance of our streets. So I understand that sentiment completely. We're also just finishing up $100 million of expenditures on our streets and bridges. And so where the few years before this, people were starting to see those improvements, now they're, they're not seeing them at all. And the last thing I want to mention, and it's, it's on the graph on page 27 where it shows what is the most important issue that you would like the city to do something about. Starting back in 2016, when I add up roads, potholes, infrastructure, traffic congestion, congestion and the additional bridge, those three add up to about 18% until 2020 where it goes down to 8%. And 2021 this year, it goes down to 5%. And I'm not going to say it's not COVID-related, but I believe it's another example of where the folks in town have just given up. I personally feel as though that, that, that depression, if I can put it that way, started with the, with the killing of the third bridge. And so I, I see this as being very logical and that's where we're at. People are very, very disappointed, very upset. Those 85 to 95% that use the roads, of course.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else? Counselor Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you know, Mr. Lewis and I have different views about, about the bridge and road, and I don't think we need to talk about that now. But what I want to talk about is what seems to me, and Brian mentioned this quite clearly, this is another example of the problems that we have that are at the state level and the city level. And they've, excuse me, the state level and the nationwide level, and they have metastasized down here in the city. And I put a lot of it to the miasma of the last four years, and I relate it to three things with the minor fourth one. COVID, Proud Boys white supremacy, homelessness, and the fourth one is, is a little bit on climate change. So it seems to me that, you know, those, those, all those issues are beyond our control and we're having to deal with them the best way we can. But I do want to ask a question about the, the issue of homelessness. As I see it, there are two ways to be dissatisfied with how the city is addressing homelessness. One way is we're not doing enough, and the other way is we're doing too much. In other words, we should be getting these people out of town. We should, they should leave. We should arrest them. We should move them out. Or the other side of that is, we need to spend more time and energy focusing on these folks. And obviously, it's not either way, but I, so I just can't tell. 80, 84% say it's a problem. How many of those say it's a problem because we're, we're doing too much to help homeless people? Or how many of that say, we're not, we're not, we're not doing enough to, to help them?
Yeah, I don't know if, if you want to respond, I'm not sure if these data can clarify that very well for us. We have asked similar questions in other surveys statewide and particularly in the Portland metro area. We've asked it different ways, but they kind of get at the nub of what you're, what you're articulating. You know, for, just as an example, you know, is homelessness mostly an issue of lack of housing that's affordable? Or is homelessness mostly an issue of mental health and drug addiction? Like, I'm not a policy person. I'm not sort of making a case for one thing or the other. Please hear me that. But what we typically get back in communities in the statewide level is about it even split, maybe a little bit more on the housing side than on the mental health and addiction side. But their perceptions of the problem that are very different and would call for different types of solutions. So, Counselor Anderson, I agree that that is not clear from these data. It's a question that is worth asking and continuing to explore. Regardless, you know, something is going on that's causing frustration on the issue.
Sure, sure. We need to do something about it, and it's up to the council to make the decision as to, you know, which way do we want to go. And I think we're going toward housing and mental health, which is, I think they're on the same side of the proposal as opposed to just getting them out of our sight, which I think is the other perception. Thanks. Oh, I do have one more comment. I think walking is COVID-related. I live close to Bush's pasture park and my wife and a guy, I go walking all the time. And you're, you have to wear your mask. You have to be concerned about people. You worry about people coming by running and all that other kind of stuff. So I think walking is, the concern about walking and parks and everything else is directly related to COVID as well as homelessness.
Hey, Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thanks, John, for the, excuse me, for the information. I think I asked this question last year or the year before, and that's about messaging. Because, you know, with our homeless situation, I think in our recent budget, if you, if you added up the entire history of Salem prior to this year, all the money that's ever been allocated towards homelessness and compared it to the amount of money that's in this year's budget, I think this year's budget would, would be more than all, the entire history of Salem. And we have so many services that we are providing, so many new things and innovative things. And I'm just wondering how much of this is, you know, about messaging and people just, they're not aware of the efforts that are going on. And I'm wondering- not aware of the efforts that are going on. And I'm wondering if it would make sense, like, for instance, when you provided more information to folks in the focus groups about transportation needs or other bonding needs, if somehow that perception would change if they had more information. I know that we get emails all the time about, you're not doing anything. Why aren't you doing anything? And I respond back with, well, we actually allocated several million dollars towards this problem just this year. And people are always stunned to hear that. And so I'm just wondering, you know, would it make sense to do something like that? Or what would you recommend in terms of, how do we change this perception?
Let me be careful with how I want to answer, because I don't want to get farther beyond what I can as a pollster. So let me try to describe what we heard as an example in the focus group. And this maybe gets at your answer, gets to your question a little bit, Counselor Hoy. We heard people talk in the focus groups about feeling unsafe going to the park, going unsafe to the park with their kids. I think generally, community members are going to use that as some things like that. It's how they understand the community issues almost always, or maybe always, before they ever consider what the budget is, what programs are being offered. They want to feel safe in their community. They want to feel pride in their community. They want to feel that others are safe in their community. And that's the way they talk about it. It's the rare citizen that will, that will talk about programs and spending. What they articulate are the conditions that they see you feel as they experience the community. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Stapleton?
Thank you so much. Thanks, John. This was a really great report. I enjoyed going through it. This is my first time, so a lot to learn here. I had a couple of questions for you. And I noticed on the demographics there on one of the back pages, we had 77% of the respondents were Caucasian. Is there any way that we can get that so that it matches the actual demographics of our city? And I think, I don't believe that the city of Salem is 77% Caucasian. Am I correct in that?
Tell you how we get that, and I don't have the census numbers in front of me. Census asks the question in two parts. It asks firstly, Hispanic or Latino, and then it asks your race. And so you could be someone Hispanic, Latino, and white, some Hispanic, Latino, and black. In our experience, and I think the way people talk about the race, that's not the way they actually think of themselves or talk about it. So what we typically do in our surveys is ask Hispanic, Latino in the set of categories, and then allow people to say any race, multiple races included, that they identify with. What we do is make sure that the white, non-Hispanic population is as close as we can to the city numbers in the city of Salem. And then people with multiple, you could, these numbers unlikely add up to 100%. Maybe they do, it would be, sometimes they do. It's not always that they do. Because people can say that they're multiple races, for example, or they could say they're just Hispanic or Latino, and no other race. And so it's a little, makes it a little bit tricky to compare directly to the census numbers, but I think it's more in line with the way people actually talk about it. But we try to get those numbers as close as we can to the population in the city.
Okay, thank you. And then I just had another question here. I was really interested in the question about biking and walking. And in 2019, you actually split those out. You had a separate one for walking and a separate for biking, which I would love to see again, just because it's such a different experience. And then, is there a question, when you're asking that one, whether or not folks do bike in the city? Like, when you're asking about biking, are you asking them, are you a commuter with your bike? You know, how is that? Could you kind of tell me more about that?
Sure. I appreciate the feedback on what's most helpful. So it's something we can take into account for the future. And then if we could, we did not ask in the survey, and we typically haven't, if they're a biker or not, but that's something we can ask if it's a priority. We're at the real maximum number of questions that we could ask, just to keep people engaged. And so if that becomes a priority, then it just means sacrificing somewhere else. But, you know, depending on what is important. I appreciate that feedback, too, and certainly can be considered for future years.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you so much. And I really appreciate all this. It's really helpful.
Thank you. Counselor Gonzalez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and John, thank you for the information. You know, I wanted to quickly go back to the homelessness question. And it seems to, in my opinion, that it falls in, people fall into two categories with regards to complaints. Part of it is, we do too much, and some, we don't do enough. So the fact you sort of let that open-ended, could you give us a sense of where people are falling? You know, because even though we're doing X amount, some people actually think that's too much.
Um, it would, again, I think any answer they would give probably go beyond the data that's there. But I, so just lean back on what I said before. I think people, in general, so I don't want to, please, here, I'm talking about the general sort of person who isn't paying a lot of attention, is not all that engaged or focused on what the policy is. They're concerned about what the outcome is. And the outcome that they want to see is fewer people experiencing homelessness on the street. They want to feel safe as they walk across their communities. They want to feel like things are, in a sense of, good order. And that's the outcome that they're focused on. And then certainly, you're going to hear from individuals who are engaged and really interested in the policy, and those are the ones who are actually going to be reaching out to you. But I think that the average sort of person in Salem is much more focused on the outcome, and that's the way that they sort of talk about it. I'm hesitant to go beyond the data, because I just don't, I just don't know from these results if people think that we're doing too much or too little. And I don't want to speculate. So that's sort of the best answer I can give, I think.
John, given what you said just now, I'd like to kind of take those two issues of homelessness and the feeling of safety, walking and bicycling. Did you see any kind of correlation there at all, or would you have seen that? Is that part of why that safety factor has gone down?
Good job. It's not obvious to me, but draw the connection for me, because I, help me understand the question a little bit better, maybe. What's the nexus that you're?
Well, you had said that the way the public views homelessness is often in terms of a personal or kind of community safety sense.
Yeah, yeah.
When they're out walking, do they feel safe? When they're out bicycling, do they feel safe? When they're in their parks, do they feel safe?
Yep.
And then we saw people feeling less safe.
Yeah.
Walking and bicycling. I wondered if there's a correlation.
There could be. That's a reasonable hypothesis to make. I think it's pretty difficult to know that definitively in these data. But anecdotally, when people in Salem and in other communities talk about homelessness, they'll often use examples like, I was walking down the street, or I was with my child, walking to, or taking them to the school bus. It's in those contexts that they often describe how they feel about these situations. So it would make sense that those two are connected. I don't know if these data can be definitive about that, but I think that's a reasonable hypothesis.
And then I wondered the same thing about the reaction. I'm not asking if you, you're welcome to answer, but correlation with the reduction in satisfaction with our parks. We did give up a couple of parks in order to deal with the COVID problem among the homeless and try to set up alternatives for them to create a distancing opportunity. But if that doesn't sort of really hurt the parks in terms of public satisfaction, I mean, you give up your two of your biggest parks, it would strike me that would show up.
It definitely came up in the focus groups.
It did what?
It came up in the focus groups.
Did it? I would think it would. That was a pretty dramatic problem that we got stuck with. Who else? Jackie Leung?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had two questions or more of a commentary. So I'm looking at the report on the last page, page 36, specifically demographics. And it's been advocated repeatedly, being able to separate segregating the data specifically when it comes to the Asian Pacific Islander community. And I do see that there was like a 3% response rate, but it combines both Asian and Pacific Islanders. And is it possible to get the breakdown, how many people identified as Asian, how many people identify as Pacific Islander, to actually get the true number from those, each of those communities who actually participated? The second question, and again, this is more of a comment, I see 95% of the respondents responded in English and 5% in Spanish. So is there going to be future opportunities to offer this survey into other languages, especially where they might not speak very much English, or they don't have, they don't speak Spanish?
To the latter question, I'll throw back to the city. The survey's available to you. If you wanted to make it a community survey, we could help, we could certainly support you in that. Also, something you might be able to handle on your own. In any sort of public opinion research, there are going to be some communities that we're just not going to hear from. So in this case, Russian speakers or Vietnamese speakers, we didn't have the survey in that language, and that's always a limitation, something that can be discussed and thought about in the future. On your first question, I can look to see if we broke out Asian Pacific Islander. I don't know, to be honest, if we did. It may as likely the way that we capture it in the survey. Going forward, we can certainly break it out, ask it independently in the future to try to get that data.
I think it'd be important to ensure that we actually break down that data, especially since we continue to advocate for a separation of both, because otherwise, you're conflating the data with both Asian and Pacific Islanders, and we should not be doing that. The second piece, in terms of, I mean, taking consideration, we advertise, or we say that we are a city with over 1,000 different languages, or at least hundreds of different languages for communities. So isn't it, doesn't it make more sense to at least offer the survey in at least maybe the top five languages that are spoken within the Salem Kaiser School District?
We could just, so two things that can be accommodated. That's something that's reasonable and practical to do. There are cost impacts, and so, and I could work with the city to sort of think through what those cost impacts are. Not to say that's a reason to do or not to it, but there is an impact. I just want to be clear about that, too, as folks make decisions about what's most appropriate.
Counselor Phillips?
Yeah, thank you, John. So I was looking at the dates when this was conducted, and I know that it's pretty much around the same time every year. But, you know, August 12 through August 16 was a rough time in terms of like the Delta surge. Is there a way to have, you know, like, how do you statistically account for, you know, the negative mood that might be attributable that to that, something that's outside of our control?
Yeah, that's a tricky one. It's a really great question, something to be thoughtful for. I'll try to find a little context if I can. It's not going to answer your question directly. But the best thing we can do is just continue to monitor over time and try to be consistent with the time period so that over the years, you know, there's not going to be a Delta wave every, so August, you know, fingers crossed. We, in some statewide survey work that we've done, we've seen a big increase from summer, so say June, July, I can't remember the exact dates, I think more closer to June, and late August, first week of September, in concern about COVID, and increase in worries about personal finances. And I think the latter is really sort of driven by the former. And so I think it's likely that we were at a moment of heightened, I mean, certainly, at a moment of heightened concern about COVID, about the Delta wave, that almost had to have had an impact on how people were thinking about the community and some of these services. How much? Impossible for me to say. On a statewide survey, we saw, on a question, how worried are you about the spread of COVID in your community, jumped from 60% from about a June time period to 70% in late August, early September, to give you some sort of sense of how much maybe COVID Delta was impacting, how people were thinking about broader issues.
Yeah, and then I guess just, you know, my comments would be, it feels like there's more risk for being perceived as doing too little when it comes to homelessness based on this data. But I hear that, as a pollster, that you guys don't know that. You can't say that. But it feels true, just my comment.
I'll just say, I don't want to get beyond the data that's in front of me. Yeah.
Counselor Nordike, did you have anything?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have been busy with an extremely busy workload of the office, but I'm not prepared to ask any questions at this time. But thank you for asking.
Okay, good. I just wanted to make sure. Counselor Anderson? Tom, you're on mute.
Very quickly, if I can do that quickly. John, I apologize for calling you Brian. I was thinking about something else with Brian. And I'm very interested in the fact that we, it's very important that we educate the people. And I look at that specifically to the maintenance bond that we're looking at in the future, because street sidewalks has declined by 19%. And if they knew that the maintenance bond, the public knew that, that the maintenance bond will not increase anything, it'll just continue and will do those kind of projects. So I think it's important as the council for us to contribute to the public as much as we can. Finally, at one point, 28% of Salem was non-white. That was a couple of years ago. And catching up with Counselor Leong, some of those people who identify as white folks still talk a different language. So she's right. It's not just 28% that might be talking. There's Russians and other language people. So we really need to make sure we reach out to, you know, the top five languages in our city. Thanks.
And just to bond, I'll just reiterate, the things that we hear in the focus groups is really, you know, understanding the property tax rates are expected to increase, that it was going to be projects will be towards their highest priority issues, including transportation, and that there was community input and oversight. Those were the key drivers to get people to feel confident to say that they had support.
That was very helpful. I think as we look forward to how to progress on these capital expenditure issues associated with bond measures, this is really useful. I hope we'll get an opportunity at some point to visit with you again about this as our finance committee and the council digs deeper into how they would like to proceed relative to capital in the city. So we'll, I'm sure we'll be, certainly be back in touch on that, on that outcome to get some advice. I don't see anyone else. John, thank you very much. This is always, whether we like the numbers or not, or we want to try to figure out how to justify them, explain them, dodge them, whatever, these are really helpful. I think it lets the community know that we're, we really are paying close attention, very close attention to how they both understand, think about, and feel about their city as we try to use city government as one of the vehicles here. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you, and thank you all for your service. These are tough times, and it's very valuable. But thank you very much. I appreciate being part of it.
Great, thank you. Is there any further discussion on this? If not, I'm going to adjourn this, and we'll turn it over to Chris to start the Housing Authority. Okay? We're adjourned. I'll turn it over to you, to Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll call to order this meeting of the Housing Authority of the City of Salem from Monday, September 27, 2021. If the recorder will please call the roll.
Vice Chair Stapleton?
Yeah.
Commissioner Anderson?
Present.
Commissioner Phillips?
Here.
Commissioner Leung?
Here.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Here.
Chair Hoy?
Here.
Commissioner Nordike?
Here.
Commissioner Lewis?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Vice Chair Stapleton, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
There are not.
Thank you. I see we have nobody signed up for public comments. The consent calendar, Vice Chair Stapleton?
Yeah, I move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
Thank you.
Moved by Commissioner Stapleton, seconded by Commissioner Leong. Commissioner Stapleton?
Yes, the consent calendar consists of the August 23, 2021 draft Salem Housing Authority minutes. Item 3.2A, collective bargaining agreement between the Salem Housing Authority and American federal and state, county, and municipality employees. Item 3.3A, adopting the City of Salem's real estate disposition purchases for the Salem Housing Authority. And 3.3B, purchase and sale agreement for South Bear Apartments and transfer of the Housing Authority payment contract associated with South Bear Apartments and the Aquana South Bear Housing Limited partnership. And that concludes the consent calendar. Long one.
No, I'm sorry. I think we have some more.
Oh, did I miss something?
We have item 3.3C.
Okay, sorry about that. Adoption of the 2021-22 operation budgets and HUD certification. Okay, and that concludes the consent calendar.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
I just have to, unfortunately, have to step off this meeting. I'm dealing with a work issue. I'll be back in a little bit. I'm sorry. Have to leave our meeting right now.
All right. Any other discussion? If the recorder will please call the roll.
Vice Chair Stapleton?
Hi.
Commissioner Anderson?
Hi.
Commissioner Phillips?
Hi.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Aye.
Commissioner Nordike has stepped away. Commissioner Lewis?
Aye.
And Chair Hoy?
Aye. Motion passes. We have no public hearings, we have no special orders of business, but we do have information reports, and I see our housing administrator, Ms. Yoots, here. Are there questions for, about, about the information reports? Or, Ms. Yoots, do you have any comments? So let's start with maybe questions from Commissioner Anderson, and then we'll go to Ms. Yoots.
Thank you, Ms. Yoots, for, as usual, your excellent report, and even more importantly, the excellent work that you and all of the people at the Housing Authority are doing. I, I would particularly like it if you could talk a little bit more about the Outreach Navigators. That seems like a very good and important program, and perhaps you could tell the council and the public who are listening a little bit more about the Outreach Navigators.
Absolutely. Good evening. I'm Nicole Yoots. I'm the Housing Administrator for Salem Housing Authority. And I'm happy to talk about our navigation team. They're a well-respected team that goes out to the homeless camps. They work with other service providers. They do wonderful work collaborating and to, in turn, trying to meet the goals of individuals at the moment they meet them. Many of these teams have been involved in the Cascade and Wallace Park closures. They have helped identify the needs of the individual, including food stamps, medical benefits, and helped to locate them a method for sheltering, or gotten them involved in getting assessments at Arches, an effort to get them on the coordinated entry list, which then allows us to be able to determine what's the best placement and, and hopefully make them successful in getting into some stabilized housing. We've grown that team tremendously over this last year. This has been some of the most difficult year for the Housing Authority through all of the ice storms, the wildfires, the COVID impacts. And in that, this group has remained positive, continues to go out there, and continues to try to outreach to individuals and help to stabilize them. Some of the great work that they have, we have done over this last year has also included a landlord navigator for the Section 18. That landlord navigator is actually every day calling landlords and trying to connect those individuals with vouchers, which has helped expedite the process for a lot of our emergency services grants that we've received over this last year. We've been very successful with that program with the navigation. They've helped connect the individuals into the coordinated entry, including what is called Belfer Zero. It is, it's a program in which the teams all collaborate together. That includes Changrila, Arches, Salem Housing Authority, and many of our other partnering agencies. And it really identifies what is the need of the individual and gets them connected much faster and quicker.
Thank you, Ms. Yoots.
Very much.
I would just note that Councilor Mary has notified me that she has, is experiencing technical difficulties, and we'll be back with this shortly. Are there any other questions or comments from Ms. Yoots? Ms. Yoots, did you have anything that you wanted to share with us that we haven't asked about?
The only other thing that I would like to just update you on is the Euquina Hall and South Fair project. We are growing closer and closer to closing that. We're very excited at the Housing Authority, and we're actually going to Housing Stability Council this Friday in hopes to getting that project into approval status. And hoping to meet our deadline of mid-November to get that project closed and up and running. So you'll see more information on that here in the near future.
And, and just in light of our previous meeting about homeless services and about maybe people aren't quite so aware of what we're doing, how many units of affordable housing or permanent supportive housing between the two projects will that bring online that we don't have currently?
So at Euquina Hall, it'll be 52 units. 20% of that will be for serious and persistent mental illness. And South Fair will be adding two additional units and remodeling an aged building. For the longevity, long-term, it's a total of 42 that will be at that site. That'll also have 20% serious and persistent mental illness. We will also be project-based voucher-ing at all of those units, which will add an extra layer of affordability for individuals with very low income.
Thank you. I just think it's important to highlight those in real terms that every day people can understand whenever we can, because clearly our message isn't getting out there, and so the more we can repeat it, the more, I think the more opportunity people have to hear it. Vice Chair Stapleton, yes?
Yeah, I, I want to thank you. I wanted to piggyback on that and ask another question about, say, Euquina Hall. How much, just in kind of maybe a, a general estimate, is that costing us to provide that?
So that, the Euquina Hall is a historic preservation. It is tied in with South Fair Apartments, so it will become one limited partnership. And the estimated cost currently is around $20 million.
Thank you so much.
Other questions for Ms. Yoots? All right. Seeing nothing else before the Housing Authority, we are adjourned.
Good. I'm going to then call to order the meeting of the Salem City Council for September 27th. If the recorder would please call a roll.
Counselor Stapleton?
Here.
Counselor Anderson?
Here.
Counselor Phillips?
Here.
Counselor Leon? Counselor Gonzalez?
Here.
Counselor Hoy?
Here.
Counselor Nordike? Counselor Lewis?
Here.
Mayor Bennett?
Here. Counselor Hoy, any additions or deletions?
Yes. I move additions and deletions to the agenda.
Okay.
Item 5.8 has been removed from the agenda by Counselor Stapleton.
All right, very good. Okay.
Do you need to vote?
Yep. Any, any questions? Okay, have a roll call then, Amy.
Counselor Stapleton?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Phillips?
Aye.
Counselor Leon? Counselor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Nordike?
Sorry, I just joined the call, so I don't know what the question is.
Voting on the deletion of the item 5.8.
Aye. Thank you.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Okay, motion passes. We'll move on then to counselor and city manager comments. Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have three things I would like to talk about tonight. Two of them directly relate to our work session topic. And that's a bit of good news that I hope people will be able to hear. So I serve as the Vice Chair of the Midland Valley Homeless Alliance, as you're, one of your representatives there, as you all know. And you may have seen in the paper that we were just awarded another grant. This time it's $3.7 million to end youth homelessness. Which, so that's $3.7 million that'll be coming to our area specifically to address youth homelessness. We know that there are more than 2,000 students in the Marion and Polk, in the Marion Polk County region, who are, who are considered homeless. Now, the definition's a little bit different for youth than it is for adults, but those are the statistics from HUD. And so we also know that within our region, out in Fall City, we have the highest rate of youth homelessness in the state. And so because this is a regional, a regional problem, and not just a city problem, it's important that we address it as a regional issue, and I'm really excited that we're going to be getting $3.7 million, and money, and programs that we've never really fully addressed before, and this is really exciting. We have a youth action board that is going to be creating, working with us to create a community plan to help end youth homelessness. And I think this is a real game changer when, in terms of what's happening with our, our homeless youth, and I'm, I'm super proud of this and super excited to be able to talk about it tonight. So there's one thing. The other thing is, last weekend, I was very happy to volunteer down at the Riverfront Park with Hazel Patton and a group of folks from Church at the Park on a fundraiser to sponsor pallet shelters. Those are our shelters that we have out on Portland Road, and we're going to consider another site tonight, and we're trying to develop in locations throughout the community. They cost about $5,000 each to buy one of those things, not to mention the cost to, to, for services, but they're about $5,000 each. Well, the, this community came together, and so far, the last number I had, and this number is seven days old, so I'm sure it's higher than this number now. But we have 45 of those pallet shelters sponsored, which is huge. Those are just people in the community coming together and saying, I care about this problem. I want to contribute my money to help solve it. So I think that is a really positive sign for the way things are in our community. I know that, you know, when you consider it, given our last meeting, or meeting before last, you know, we can tend to get down on things and think that people are feeling negative, but this is a really positive sign. People are, they're investing in this problem to help try to solve it. I mean, 45 of those things at $5,000 apiece. I talked to a gentleman who says, you know, I have a, I have a fund I set aside, I've been, I save money, and when I heard about this, I came down here and I want to give my $5,000, which is, you know, pretty impressive, that, that individuals paying for an entire shelter. I mean, generally speaking, it's, you know, whatever people can afford, $100 here or there, whatever, and we combine all that to, to support one. But we've had, we had several people who were really interested in sponsoring these individually, which is just remarkable, and it was really, really time well spent on a Saturday afternoon in the rain last week. The other, so those are two positive things, and I want to talk about one not so positive thing. In fact, it's really awful. And those are the recent shootings that we've had in East and Northeast Salem, not only in the city, but also in the incorporated areas of the community. It's quite troubling what's happening with gun violence in our area. Counselor Gonzalez and I met with Chief Womack on Friday to have a conversation about things that we could do and strategies we could take to help the community feel a little bit safer and to, to help get the information out and to hopefully really impact this in a positive way. So I just wanted people to be aware that this is something that Counselor Gonzalez and I are certainly aware of, and Chief Womack has some, some great strategies in mind to address this. So I just kind of wanted to talk about that, and that's all I have. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Hoy. Anyone else? Counselor Lewis?
Yes, real quick, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I want to, I want to thank the Saul volunteers that were in Wallace Marine Park this past Saturday working on the cleanup. It's, it's a great effort that's done annually. I couldn't help but remember the, the first cleanup I ever attended was in 1971, when Osberg, who had just started at the University of Oregon that year, did a beach cleanup. And what's really nice about that for me, it's 50 years later and I still remember.
Congratulations, Counselor Lewis. That's, that's a milestone for people our age, man.
Remembering is the milestone.
Exactly. No, I meant that, that way. Counselor Nordike?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, counselors. So it's been a very, very busy day at the office, but I'm so happy to be with you tonight. So I have three updates myself. This past weekend, I volunteered at a vaccination clinic put on by Family Building Blocks, which is an incredible organization locally to support local families. The clinic was held at the Willamette Valley Medical Center on Lancaster, and they had free food, free swag, and lots of support available to anyone ages 12 and up who was ready to vaccinate. They even had gift cards for individuals who are vaccinating. And they had people fill out the forms, make sure that all the requirements were met for that. So if you are still interested in vaccination, they will be putting on more clinics. But really, folks, I want to stress what our own ER physician, our own in-house doctor, as it were, has said previously, please vaccinate and wear a mask. We really need everyone to support us in this regard. Next, I'm, to all of yous out there who love to read all the city council reports in great depth, you've already heard this. But to those of you who have not had an opportunity to peruse all of our materials this evening, I really want to draw your attention to the recommendations for the use of our park facilities made by our very own Salem Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, also known as SPRAB. It's very deep in your materials tonight, which are of course available online, so anyone can take a look at them. But the SPRAB folks took a careful look, not just at the city of Salem park policies and practices, but also at other jurisdictions like the city of Bend, Corvallis, Eugene, Grove City, Hillsborough, Kaiser, Portland, and Marion County. I'm also pleased that they made equity a priority by meeting with the LGBTQIA intersectional task force of the Human Rights Commission in June, and meeting with the entire Human Rights Commission in July. These meetings, of course, were open to the public. So I won't go through all of the details of their recommendations, and I know that we have a motion on the table about getting city input on that. I'm sure there were city liaisons and city staff as part of this process. But I do want to point out that the reason that I brought this motion in the first place was to address widespread community concern about some people using our parks and not following the rules that we follow. People who are using our facilities without permits, people who are making others feel unsafe. I specifically asked the Parks and Rec Board to take a look at this and to identify best practices. We can't be the only city that is struggling with individuals who are, who are butting heads at our park facilities and who are making other people feel unsafe. So embedded within these recommendations are a lot, a lot of thought has been poured into how to address, for example, people who continue to use facilities without permits. What kind of enforcement options do we have? Should we have a tiered set of enforcement so that people who continue to break the rules that you and I follow will actually be held accountable? So take a look at those require, excuse me, at those recommendations, and let your representative on city council know how you feel about that, because these parks are for all of us. And it's a priority of mine that everyone feels safe using our parks.
And we'll have a report on that under information items, counselor, in some detail with city staff, so.
Yeah, and then last but not, I know. And then last but not least, I just wanted to give you all an update on mobile response units. So you may have seen there's been some newspaper articles to that effect, and I just want to make a couple of quick points. I know that there will be more opportunities for us to discuss this as a council in the future. But number one, I want to remind folks of the breadth and diversity of support for mobile response units in our area. You may recall that we received almost 100 public comments for our budget committee meetings on this topic alone, which is virtually unheard of. We know that downtown business owners, we know that the CEO and president of Salem Health, we know that the chair of the Salem Area Lodging Association, we know that mental health advocates, medical professionals, and homelessness advocates all asked us to support this unit. And it's not every day that such a variety of folks agree on something. So I think that's worth pointing out. The two other points I want to make, there is free state and federal money available to supplement the creation of mobile response units. And so we want, really want to make sure, if we're going to leave free money on the table, we'd better have a good reason for it. And then last but not least, a routine comment that I keep hearing from mobile response units is that we would have nowhere to take them to. And to that I have two responses. One, if you look at the crime analysis done by the Eugene Police Department of the Mobile Crisis Unit in Eugene, the granddaddy of the mall cahoots, Eugene Police Department did a deep dive into where and how these calls are handled. And they said transport calls make up just 24% of the total call volume that cahoots is dispatched to. That's one in four, folks. So you don't need to have transportation to every conceivable location necessary for us to reach and have an impact on people who are struggling with mental health crisis. We also know from Tim Black, who actually came to one of our city council meetings in a prior year, that yeah, the vast majority of these calls are handled in the field. As for locations to transport, we know that between the new hotel for Arches, the new hotel for Center for Hope and Safety, all the new pallet shelters that we're getting fundraised for, the Navigation Center, the doubling of beds virtually, almost a doubling of beds at UGM, we will have places. And we don't have everything perfect, but I submit to you that we have what we need to keep moving the ball forward. So I look forward to future conversations with all of you about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Stapleton?
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. And two things, just really quick, I wanted to note why I pulled my motion and let you know that Steve Powers told me earlier today and said, I think that we can work together and maybe develop this a little bit more before we bring it forward or back to council. So develop this a little bit more before we bring it forward or back to council. So I am working behind the scenes on that and hope to um bring something back later um about this very important topic. Um, and then lastly, I wanted to talk about COVID for just a second. Um, I, my brother-in-law is actually struggling right now uh with COVID. And uh he got it about a week ago and um and, and the hard thing, I think, is um, he's vaccinated, uh, thankfully, uh, but he was also struggling with brain cancer. And so just the combination of the two um is, is really hard, obviously. Um, and so I just wanted to remind folks that the, the reason that we get vaccinated is not for ourselves so much, but it's for the person next to us. And um, just really want to encourage folks to, to think about um those that they come in contact with every day, um, or the ones they visit at the grocery store walking by. Um, we do this because we care for other people. We care for our community, um, and we want to ease the pain and suffering in our community right now. So please get vaccinated and um, yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Leung?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, first, Counsel Stapleton, thank you for sharing. I'm very sorry for what you're going through. Um, I wanted to start off um by um reading a land acknowledgement real quick and make a few quick announcements. Um, and quick, sorry, I've got a two-year-old who's kind of mad at me right now. Um, so we're gathered on the land of the Kalapuya, who today are represented by the Confederate tribes, the Grand Round, the Confederate tribes of Salits Indians, whose relationship with this land continues to this day. We offer gratitude for the land itself, for those who have steward it for generations, and for the opportunity to learn, study, work, and be in the community on this land. We acknowledge our city's history, like many others, is tied to the first colonial developments in the Willamette Valley. Finally, we respectfully acknowledge and honor the past, present, and future indigenous communities who live in and around Salem. So with a few announcements, um, I want to echo um for a moment Counselor Stapleton's um stress about following COVID-nineteen pandemic public health protocols. This means wearing a mask, keeping your distance from people, from, no, not in your household, and getting vaccinated. Several counselors and I are not strangers to COVID-nineteen. It has affected us personally, with loved ones and many others in our community who have died or suffered from long-term health impacts, who are now dealing with the COVID long-haul um issues. And um, I want to make sure I'm just sending a lot of love and care to not only Counselor Stapleton, but also to other counselors and city staff who are dealing with illness and death with loved ones. And just to remind people who are residents and people are viewers to please take this seriously. I mean, Counselor Phillips is dealing with it in the emergency room. Counselor Stapleton are dealing with individuals in our household and family members who are um at risk or who have died and dealing with community members who've died as well. Um, some other announcements, um, as a reminder to families who are struggling to pay back rent or city utilities, especially water, um, the state, um, state of Oregon still has funding available to help provide rental assistance. Um, go to OregonRentalAssistance.org. And the city of Salem had just released an email that talked about utility assistance for water. To contact the Public Works Department Utility Billing at CityAsalem.net, call the number five zero three five eight eight six zero nine nine, or go to the CityAsalem.net forward slash utilities for more information. Um, another thing I wanted to mention is making sure that if you're able to, to continue supporting our businesses, our local businesses in particular, our community needs us. That includes visiting our favorite local um restaurants and, and store owners. Um, one recommendation, and um, I could recommend a lot because I'd like to go visit quite a few places. So if you like board games and you like having snacks, go to Ticket to Play Board Game Cafe, grab a drink, grab a wrap, sandwich, or soup, play a few board games. You can even buy a board game or even rent some. If you don't know how to play, they'll teach you how to play too. And last, um, kind of echoing some of the things that was discussed, um, we are seeing increase in number pedestrian deaths as well as gun violence. So if you're a driver, please be aware of people on the street. For pedestrians and bike raiders, please don't go around distracted. And as for gun violence, I hope people continue to follow gun safety procedures, including locking up their guns when it's not in use, uh, to avoid our youth getting access to firearms and causing accidental or purposeful shootings. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to follow up with the personal anecdote um about the COVID issue, and I also want to express my sorrow and sympathy for the personal losses of or personal um concerns of individual counselors, Counsel Leung and Counsel Stapleton, but for everybody. And um, here's my personal anecdote. I was at the post office the other day, and as I was coming out, getting onto my bike, and taking off my mask to start riding away, a woman came in, a young, healthy woman, and I opened the door for her, and I said, excuse me. In fact, I still have my mask on. I said, excuse me, aren't you forgetting something? She looked at me and said, what? I said, your mask. And she said, oh, that's all right. I'm okay. And I said, it's not that you're okay, it's, you should have concern about everybody else. And that's exactly what Counselor Leung just said and Counsel Stapleton just said. So, and, and I'm sorry that Counsel Phillips hasn't, uh, he always comes and tells us about the medical statistics, but we as a community need to stop, and individuals in the community, we need to stop thinking, I'm okay, thinking, I, 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 thinking it's an issue of my freedom to do what I want. That's not. It's an issue of caring for others. It's an issue of social responsibility. Uh, it's an issue of being part of something outside of and bigger than yourself. So think of others. The only way we're going to get out of this is we get out of it together. So wear your mask, follow the COVID protocols, and think of people other than yourself. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. All right. Oh, Counsel Gonzalez, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. Non-Wen Say Jose Gonzalez. You know, I always introduce myself in multiple languages to highlight our city's long-term diversity. Today I spoke Haitian Creole in honor of the Haitians at our southern border, which we all saw on the news last week, and you know, the people looking for a better life, and I have faith they'll find it. Uh, just three quick comments, three, uh, three recent meetings I wanted to mention. As Council President Hoi uh earlier told us, our meeting with the chief, yeah, it's, you know, the first of, of many steps we're planning to take. A few takeaways are, we should keep introducing him to members of our northeast Salem community. Some community gatherings Zoom in person as things open up a little more. And the one thing he does need, he needs more data, you know, because he's, we're trying to ask for help in certain ways, but he just, he's working on getting the right kind of data, so we know exactly where some of these issues are concentrated. And uh, just my other two meetings was with chief, um, with uh Mayor, uh, Kaiser Mayor Kathy Clark and Salem Kaiser School Board Member, uh, Oswaldo Avila. And really, part of that discussion, and I think we all, the consensus we had is it'd be really great if we could figure out a way that our boards and councils had some kind of uh more interaction. Because it seems like a lot of our staff is engaged with the staff of those entities, but at our level, we don't. So that's something we, we should work on. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Counsel Phillips?
I'll try to be brief. Thank you, Mayor Bennett, uh, this week. Um, basically, I'm just going to tell a personal anecdote after, of course, you know, uh, giving my heartfelt, um, you know, uh, sympathies to fellow counselors like Stapleton and Leung, um, who've all experienced, you know, this in their family or firsthand. Um, so, so COVID-nineteen is still with us. It's still real. Um, I think our community is, is doing, you know, something to take it seriously, that we have uh flattened the curve with increased utilization of vaccines and by wearing masks in public. Um, yesterday I was able to get my um booster shot um as a frontline healthcare worker. Um, you know, the Pfizer vaccines aren't just FDA-approved, they're now authorized uh for boosters if you've been over um six months since your second dose, and you're over the age of sixty-five or have a medical condition that increases your risk for severe complications, it's recommended that you avail yourself of a booster shot, and then they're available for anybody who lives or works in a situation where you're at increased risk of transmission or getting the, the virus. Um, so I was really happy. I could get my shot yesterday. Um, you know, it's also flu season, so people should strongly consider getting their flu shot this time of year. Uh, makes a difference. And really, by working together, by everybody wearing their mask when we go out into public, um, and by getting vaccines, um, you know, when they're available as indicated, we, we can help end the pandemic and make everybody safer. So please keep doing the work. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Okay, Mr. Powers?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Bennett. Uh, a few uh brief uh announcements, updates for council. Uh, first, the library will be reopening October first in a COVID-safe manner for our uh visitors and for staff. We'll have, if COVID allows, a, a more appropriate opening and celebration uh later this year, November, December, but we do want to get the library opened as quickly as we can in a safe way. Uh, since we last met, the, the city, along with others, welcomed Western Oregon University to our downtown. And uh my thanks to the counselors and staff who helped uh tour Marion County and Polk County Commissioners and staff through our navigation center, soon to our, our recently acquired navigation center. Uh, regarding uh police, and thank you, uh, counselors for the, the comments regarding the chief and his efforts to, to build community trust, uh, engage with the community. Uh, progress continues on the police department's uh three-year strategic plan and related community trust building. And uh, the chief has done a, a lot of work internally, and now he's shifting it to uh external. And you'll be seeing more and, and our, our residents and business owners will be seeing more on how to provide uh feedback uh, uh, to, to our police department as, as that strategic plan has developed. So please, please look for that so you can share it with your constituents. And then last, uh, you know, the work that we do, um, the services that we provide, even though there was a, a slippage in community satisfaction, you know, our, our services are, are really delivered by employees, by people, uh, by, by residents of our city. Uh, and one was recently honored uh at, at a regional event on a regional basis, uh, our Willow Lake uh wastewater treatment plant, regional wastewater treatment plant, uh, our operator Craig Boudreau was recognized by the uh Pacific Northwest Clean Water Association as the Oregon Treatment Plant Operator of the Year. And, and uh, I know uh certainly uh the mayor and, and those who have been on council a while, a while know that while homelessness might be, you know, the top issue right now, believe me, if our, if our wastewater treatment plant had problems, uh, that would soon become the, the top uh issue of concern to our residents when their toilets weren't flushing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. It's uh it's always helpful to get back to those, some of those basic services we do as well, which actually scored quite high. Um, very good. Uh, is there anything else then? Okay. Uh, we're going to move on then to public comment. Got a fairly substantial number of folks that are going to be speaking this evening. I want to remind everyone, you have three minutes. Uh, I ask you to stop speaking when it, when your three minutes are up. Please introduce yourself and either your address or your ward. Uh, so we'll begin with uh Dylan McDowell.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. My name is Dylan McDowell. I'm the Chair of the Salem Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, SPRAB, and I'm a resident of Ward Eight. I wanted to comment tonight on the park usage and permitting recommendations submitted by SPRAB. And thank you, Counselor Nordike, for those, for your comments. And um, just to quickly recap, as Counselor Nordike mentioned, I and three other members have gone through city code. We've looked at other cities. We attended some public meetings, and we had two public meetings of our own to pull together these recommendations. It was then taken to SPRAB as a whole, where we forward these along to you as council. And I would just say, we're really excited about these. We think that as a whole, they'll make a big improvement in the park system. Um, they spread out across the gamut in terms of some small changes uh to some bigger systemic processes that we can implement. I think that uh our recommendation to the council is really to adopt these as quickly as possible and to work with city staff to try and implement as many as possible ahead of the next permitting season. Uh, the sum of these can be done relatively quickly, while others may require a more formalized public process. And as that happens, we fully expect some of them may come back to SPRAB for comment and input, and we really look forward to partnering with all of you as we move forward and, and really see these put into practice. Um, I will stop there and just say that, once again, we really appreciate the opportunity and really appreciate Counselor Nordike's motion and having SPRAB involved in this, so we can provide that expertise and recommendations. Uh, I will be around later tonight as well to, during the information report if there are additional questions. I'm happy to answer any now as well, though, and thank you again for your time.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Uh, we will also uh be talking a little about how we're going to proceed forward with these, uh, Dylan, during that uh, during that discussion of the um information report that you've sent us. It was really quite good. Thank you.
Absolutely. And I would, if I may, Mr. Mayor, I just want to quickly acknowledge the work of, oh, I just wanted to quickly acknowledge the work of Dr. Robert Chandler, Kimberly Spivvy, and Tony Wood, on city staff, that really kept us organized and effective, and we couldn't have done it without them. So I know they'll be there tonight, and um, I will be happy to help provide any input as I can.
Great, very good. Thank you very much. Uh, Thomas? Yes, you're welcome. Thomas Bennett?
Hi, thank you for having me. So tonight, the reason that I've had any kind of question or concern is I want to talk about the homeless encampment that you guys planned on going, moving forward with on, off of Wallace Road. Uh, the biggest problem that I see with that is the amount of money that you're actually going to be investing into it, as well as the money you're taking away from a lot of homeowners in the area that are going to be losing roughly thirteen percent of their home value. Uh, you're also introducing a higher crime rate to a residential area that has low crime rate, as well as many other increased police calls that you might have to what was once a lower area of any crime, as well as damage to residential property, significant increase in drug use, public intoxication. Uh, these are all things to take into consideration when you're moving a homeless encampment into a residential area, uh, as well as, again, like I said, thirteen percent is roughly the estimate of value of property loss. Um, so I just want to know what all you guys were doing in that area. Like, are you accepting the risk of having more problems in a residential area? Is there no other area in the city that would be more uh conducive or better located for people that have services closer by, whereas off of Wallace Road, they only have two areas, like the Plaid Pantry and one restaurant? Uh, I just see a lot of problems in the future, and it doesn't look like there's been a whole lot of information or questions coming out from the city on that, and that's.
Thank you.
And, well, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, William Katie?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council. Um, I live in West Salem in Ward Eight, um, and also want to address the managed uh homeless campus being proposed. Um, the proximity to, to schools, there's, you know, a number of schools that are close by, only a few blocks away. Um, not to mention, you know, the, the apartment complexes that bookend all sides of those that are, are loaded with kids. You know, there's a real safety concern. Um, the other piece is, you know, having that be so, almost to the city line. Um, that's a long way away from any of the services that are, are, are downtown, are downtown for mental health services or, you know, food to be provided. Um, you know, in speaking with a lot of our neighbors around the neighborhood, um, nobody has the, you know, the, the not-in-my-backyard mentality about this. It has more to do with, there should be a better place for this, and the proximity and the safety aspect, you know, to go along, you know, with some cost uh questions as well. But uh, it just seems to be that there, there needs to be a, a better place that uh is better for all parties. And everybody's in favor of, you know, finding uh some better solutions, because homelessness is a problem in Salem, and it's a problem in a lot of the part of Oregon, and we need to find some solutions. But I don't think putting it this far away from services and this close to children in schools is probably the best. Okay, so I'm interested to hear what your guys' opinions are on it, and uh, you know, I speak for a good chunk of my neighbors that all agree that we need to find a, a better place for this.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, I have uh a first name, Riyadh. We'll need your last name, Riyadh. There you are. No, that's not you. Riyadh? Okay. Kimberly Eve?
Hello.
Hello.
Mr. Lewis, long time no see. Or should I say Counselor Lewis? Sorry. Um, my name is Kimberly Eve, and I'm a resident of Salem Town. Uh, I appreciate the comments of the previous gentleman, uh, speaking to the fact that we all agree that there's a homeless agree that there's a homeless problem, and this isn't about not finding them a good place to live, but about potentially looking for a better place than what is suggested here on Wallace Road. The proposed location on Wallace Road, as he mentioned, is between a large apartment complex with families and children, and is less than a city block from our gates here at Salem Town, which is a large community of seniors. There are 462 homes in Salem Town with vulnerable seniors. Some of them are quite fragile medically. We do not have 7x24x365 security to keep us safe. So a huge concern is how will the city help keep us safe? We've had recent incidents with homeless population coming through, and our crime rate in Salem Town has increased significantly in the last year because of that. Our understanding is that there's an assumption that there will be fewer problems at this location, because the priority will be for 55-year and older campers. I don't know if that was a correct assumption, but I have a hard time believing that there will be 60 campers that fit that profile, in which case there would be a gap that would likely be filled with younger, more healthy, more mobile individuals that could potentially pose a serious threat to those of us in close proximity. Another comment that was brought up by one of our other residents who we are all concerned here in Salem Town is that there was mention of several other similar camps in Salem that are working well, but we don't know what that means. What is working well? COVID is also a huge consideration. Will these individuals be vaccinated? Will it be a mandatory requirement? And the last question is, why are several other locations that we found on one of the city sites that are available for lease or sale? There's a 42-acre location on southeast Gaffin Road. There's a 30-acre site near the airport, and Mill Creek Corporate Center in South Salem also has multiple sites that are potentially available to house these individuals. So, speaking on behalf of my family and the safety of my neighbors here in Salem Town, we would really like for you all to consider a different location for these people.
Thank you very much, Kimberly.
Thank you.
Questions? DJ Vincent?
Good evening, councilors, Mr. Mayor, DJ Vincent, Ward Three. It is an honor to be sharing with you tonight. I believe I am now sharing my screen, and the clock isn't one of my little windows now. But I will say that Church of the Park has been serving those who are unsheltered since 2007 with support and navigation services. It has been an honor to work so closely in the last two years with the City of Salem. We have been, you know, working on hope-focused navigation, with a lot of that being connected to housing and jobs programs and developing the assets of those who are unsheltered so they can reintegrate into our city. We do work with so many partners in our city. Right now, we're providing 200 meals a day through the work that we do, 20 faith-based communities, four of our local restaurants, and huge thanks to Marion Polk Food Share. We do want to say, you know, Church of the Park is doing this through working heavily with the city, with referrals to Union Gospel Mission. Weekly, at the micro shelters that we're managing, we have arches coming out with showers and housing assessments, as well as the fine folks with the City of Salem Housing Authority. Again, huge focus on workforce development and getting people back to work. In the three experiments we've had, which, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and all the councilors for coming out and seeing, as we tried to provide a safe, sanitary, and supported environment at the pavilion at the Oregon State Fairgrounds, we helped 113 people stay safe. 10 of those folks were housed in just two months, and then 21 were able to get jobs. Then, as we have moved to the old DMV site, we've seen 85 folks come through those micro shelters. Nine have been housed into permanent housing, 16 jobs. And then, the Catholic Community Services site, where it's going to be women and family-focused, we have 30 of these livable shelters going up right now, and we anticipate this winter serving up to 130 folks at that site. And the site being proposed tonight in West Salem, we will be focusing on 55-plus. It will be sheltering just 60 people at a time, but we believe in the course of a year, we'll see 100 people come through the site, again, in a safe, sanitary, and supported way with case managers, and we're hoping to see goals of 25 of those folks housed and 40 of 50 of those folks, you know, reintegrated into...
Thank you, DJ. I'm sorry, that apparently indicates time's up. I didn't realize that you'd get cut off, so... Does anyone have any questions for DJ?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I do.
Yeah, Vanessa, go ahead.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Vincent, thank you very much for your presentation. As you know, I volunteered alongside some of your colleagues at Church of the Park, and I've toured your fairgrounds pavilion. Can you talk to us a little bit more about security? You've probably heard the prior comments from concerned citizens in West Salem. What kind of security measures have we been providing at those facilities? Because I want to help people feel a little less fearful, knowing what kinds of security measures are provided at organized camps around town.
Yeah, first of all, these aren't drop-in sites. We work with housing assessments and then select people based on vulnerability, and if you're concerned about it being 55-plus, we have 357 people on the waitlist right now who've signed up with our housing assessment and are ready to go, so we will be able to make that promise. We have digital accountability on the site, which is actually a huge prevention of things being stolen or any violence being done. And then, we have a trained safety team, all those folks. There's someone on site 24 hours a day who is certified through regular safety training.
Thank you.
Great. Okay, great. Thank you very much. Oh, I'm sorry, Jim. Jim, go ahead.
Thanks, Mr. Vincent, for coming down. I really appreciate, you know, I've heard the story over and over, but there's something new each time I listen to you, so it's great. Two questions. I want to make sure, you mentioned 357 people on the waiting list. Are those all 55-plus?
Great clarification. So 357 is what our case management team and outreach team let me know today was our number of people on the waiting list. We will filter that for 55-plus. When this micro site gets approved, then we would start calling those folks who meet that criteria.
Do you know how many of the 357 are 55-plus?
That is, I can get that number for you, but I don't have it tonight.
Okay, I think that's important. The other question is, I'm assuming you're working with the city on this proposed site. I'm curious what outreach you have done with the community around the proposed site?
Yes, so we made a presentation to the Neighborhood Association just last week, and I have been working, again, with the city on trying to reach out to the nearest neighbors. What we've done at both other sites is made ourselves available to all those who, you know, provide comment or concern, to follow up, to give ear to their concern. And then, we did, at the other sites, we did a one-mile radius, where, again, we went to businesses and folks and just heard about their concerns and saw if there were any way we could address those.
Okay, I'm assuming that you have not done that one-mile radius conversation with this proposed site?
No, we've only met with the Neighborhood Association.
Thank you.
I can add that I did some additional notifications around the site, if that's helpful to know.
Okay.
Well...
How close to the site, Gretchen? How close to the site were you with your notifications? What was your distance?
Yes, thank you. I did the adjacencies, reached out to locations that were directly adjacent to the property.
Okay. Jim, are you...
And around the corner a little bit, down Brush College.
Okay, Jim, are you?
Well, I'm more, I'm more interested in what has historically been done by these groups, and that is, they kind of pinpoint the site, and then they circle it with a mile radius, and they go and talk to folks, and I think that's a tremendous idea. I don't know if it's been done in this case.
Okay, and Chris Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. DJ, thank you for your testimony tonight. A question for you, in the site out on Portland Road that you have, you're currently operating, what kind of problems have you, have the neighbors talked to you about since you've opened?
Very good. There were many concerns, many of which I've read in the public testimony about this site, and, again, I would be happy to provide, you know, folks from Center 50-plus haven't had concerns since we've been there, general neighbors in the area. Again, what I heard from Neighborhood Association chairs in the north area is that they've been very encouraged and want to see, again, the goal is for all eight wards, for there to be one micro shelter in each, to share this opportunity to help folks transition.
I'm sorry, just to clarify then, since you've been up and running on Portland Road, have you received complaints from the neighbors? I'm not talking about before you opened, I'm talking about since you've been running. Have you had concerns or problems that the neighbors have reported to you?
The only concerns we've had are from our very, like, immediate neighbors, which I think they would give a positive testimony tonight, that we addressed their concerns and that they don't have any tonight. The Teamsters group right next door.
Thank you.
And I think that was more about people parking.
Okay, so the Teamsters are okay on this then, huh?
Yeah, we can reach out and make sure, but we've had good conversations back and forth.
Okay, well, that'll help. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, DJ, very much. Maddie Alvarado? Maddie Alvarado?
Hi, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Oh, there you are. Hi.
Okay, I'm not, I don't know how to get my, it won't let my video start. I think the host has disabled it. So I'll just, can you hear me?
Yes, yeah, go ahead.
Um, so, good evening. My name's Maddie. I think we've made that pretty clear at this point. I live in Ward Eight, and I'm providing public comment in regards to the micro shelters being placed on Wallace Road. I would like to convey that I hope that my statement is not misinterpreted as "Not in My Backyard" movement. If you look at the map and the location of where these micro shelters will be built, it will be embedding them into some of Salem's most vulnerable populations. So as people have already stated, elderly 55-plus living, low-income apartment housing, and a large population of West Salem's minority families. So I consider myself very privileged that I'm able to work in a position, that I have the ability to attend tonight's meeting. However, I know several families that don't have the luxury of attending tonight because their job schedules would not allow for it, and unfortunately, their voices won't be heard tonight. So the truth about homelessness is that drug addiction and mental health issues rank as two out of the top three contributors to it. This last week, while downtown, my husband and my 12-year-old son were accosted by a transient man called horrible racial slurs, and my son was hit by this man's shoes. He threw them at him. My husband quickly identified that this man was suffering from some sort of mental issue, was able to de-escalate the problem, and then got my son into the safety of a local business. That doesn't change that knowing my son had to witness this type of hatred, and then being forced to have a very real conversation with him, especially explaining that, you know, this person's having some sort of a mental break, and they didn't necessarily think those thoughts. It was painful and extremely difficult. So many of the children in West Salem, especially right in these apartments that people have already referenced, they're already affected by low, being low income. They're worrying about how they're going to get their next meal, and the last thing these children should be worried about is being accosted by someone as they play outside in the apartment complex parking lot, or, you know, finding drug debris. I recognize that finding solutions to homelessness is a difficult task, but I do request that you recognize that the solution is not to embed a vulnerable population into another population, another vulnerable population. Not long ago, the City of Salem was presented with an idea of transitional living over by the Salem Hospital near Brush Park, the Gady neighborhood area, and that Gady neighborhood actually shut it down.
Maddie, thank you very much. I'm sorry, time's up. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Alvarado? Okay, thank you very much. Dale Smith? Dale Smith? Okay. Steve Anderson?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Steve Anderson, 3240 Geller Road Northwest, 97304, West Salem Neighborhood Association Land Use Chair and Co-Chair Edgewater Partners. I'm here speaking for the Neighborhood Association tonight. The chair asks I make a couple points on two items. First, item 6.5B, our chair requested Counselor Lewis and Counselor Stapleton to bring this one up for review by City Council, and it's on your information item. Issues here, in addition to the conditions, are public safety and community safety. Three subdivisions are construction in that area in the near future, plus the high school expansion, and proposed multifamily. We believe that this issue should have a hearing before the City Council. Secondly, on item 3.3B, we had DJ and Gretchen at our Neighborhood Association meeting. Gretchen's been there all year long with the homeless issues. We appreciate her support in communication, and DJ. There was general support for this idea, however, by our bylaws and our town hall forum, we have not gone through the steps to take the necessary input and vote as the Neighborhood Association, so tonight, no one speaks as a Neighborhood Association position, just so you know. Taking my Neighborhood Association hat off, personally, I think this is a good idea. All things considered, there's great work here and a lot of positive effects for this thing. I trust Gretchen and the city and DJ for the work they're doing in this area. Also, the advisory board is a lot of experts, and so if you look at this, the idea of if there is need for adjustment, there is plenty of resources on the advisory board with DJ and the city to adjust quickly and make this a model camp to work and support and provide West Salem's part in helping to find a solution here. Under full disclosure, I've just been asked recently, as a community leader, longtime community leader in West Salem, by DJ to sit on this advisory board. So I have not sat there for a long time, but I guess, just to be fully disclosed, I'm now part of the Church of the Parks Advisory Board, so somebody may consider that as a presidential presentation. But as you debate this, there is need. I think that this project has very positive benefits. I think it will help our community and our homeless, the work to get people jobs and back into the community, and all of the positive sides of this, make this a valued project. So I would encourage you to debate it, to discuss it, and support it. So that is where I'm at, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions for Steve? Thank you very much. Jason Greenwood?
Can you see me?
Yes.
All right. So, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor Bennett, council members. My name is Jason Greenwood, owner of Divine Distillers. I am, again, reaching out to the City Council because our business continues to have issues with the City of Salem's planning department specifically. I want to, first off, thank Councilors Leung, Nordike, and Gonzalez, all for having been willing to talk about this. I also want to thank Chuck Bennett for having spent time talking to us about it, not this particular issue, but others. In general, we would love to stay open. I'm not asking for the city to help our problem now, I'm asking for the City Council members to think about where this city really wants to be. We are not the... about where this city really wants to be. Um, we are not the only business that are having this, these problems. Um, I know of many other businesses, uh, that have had problems with the city, cities Planning Department, um, and, uh, not in our specific problem, but we have had lots of other businesses that have had problems and have actually left the city and have moved somewhere else. Currently, me and my five businesses that are within, being affected are considering leaving the city, um, and going elsewhere. We have helped the city through the COVID environment, through the COVID crisis. We have helped people in the city. We have become good friends with lots of people in the city. And it's kind of sad that I'm actually considering leaving Salem. I think that, uh, the city should really think about what it wants to do and how it wants to handle, uh, success with businesses. Um, we should be asking, what can we do to help businesses succeed? Not trying to figure out how we can screw small businesses. Um, there's not much to what I want to say other than thank people for having tried and, um, mention that, uh, this is not a unique problem to Divine Distillers and, um, I would really like the city to try and figure out how to solve this because otherwise we will lose more and more small businesses to these problems.
Thank you, Mr. Greenwood. Uh, any questions for Mr. Greenwood? Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move on then to the consent calendar. Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move approval of the consent calendar with the exception of items 3.2B pulled by Counselor Anderson, 3.3B pulled by Counselor Anderson, 3.3D pulled by Counselor Hoy, and 3.3F pulled by Counselor Lewis.
Very good. Second?
Second.
Second, who did that? Trevor? Okay, very good. Counselor Phillips is the second.
And that leaves us with item 3.1A, the September 13th, 2021 Draft City Council Minutes. 3.1B, September 20th, 2021 Draft City Council Work Session Minutes. Item 3.2A, authorizing a transfer appropriation authority to the Airport Fund for our security system. Item 3.3A, lease amendment with Hallelu Beauty LLC for leased space in the Liberty Parkade. That's a lot of Ls for somebody that's got Invisaligns in. Uh, item 3.3C, approve the addition of .5 FTE in the Urban Renewal, uh, Urban Development Department to hire a program manager wanting to support federal program delivery efforts. Item 3.3E, amendment to the lease with Swift Mountain LLC for city-occupied leased space at 960 Liberty Street Southeast, housing and city of Salem Employee Health Hub. And that concludes the consent calendar.
Hey, very good. Any discussion? Okay, if the recorder would please call a roll.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Phillips?
Aye.
Counselor Leung?
Aye.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Stapleton?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Okay, motion's passed. We will move on then to our public hearing. So I'd like to open that public hearing and if you could take us where we need to be. Amy?
Okay, the City Council will now conduct a public hearing concerning the Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Programs Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. The hearing will begin with the staff presentation, and individuals testifying are limited to three minutes and must provide their name and address or ward. There was only one individual signed up, but, um, I don't believe he has joined the meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, Shelley.
Good afternoon. Good evening, Mayor Bennett and council members. My name is Shelley Ahinger. I am in the Urban Development Department and work with the Federal Programs Team. I'm going to show you a brief presentation of our CAPER report. Before you tonight is the 2020, 2021 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. This, uh, report is required by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. We report on the performance of some projects and programs that used Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Resources for the period of July 1, 2020 through June 30th, 2021. The Consolidated Annual Report identifies the, uh, CDBG and home activities that were, that meet the needs of individuals and families earning 80% of median income or less. For a family of four residing in Salem, that maximum income limit is $56,550. This is the first year reporting for the 2024, 2020, 2024 Consolidated Plan. The Council approved the plan in June of 2020, uh, of June of 2020. Based upon applications from community partners during the 2020, 2021 program year, there were three funding priorities: ending homelessness, expanding affordable housing, and economic development. You will see that we spent a little over $1.5 million addressing those three priorities. These federal resources focused on the community's plan to address homelessness through case management, rent assistance, subsistence payments, and supporting the Salem Winter Warming Network Center. As noted by the chart, economic development activities were also carried out for job creation and retention. It is important to note that the city received CDBG funds in, in the amount of 1.4 million to prevent, respond, and prepare for identified needs due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Those resources are not included in this presentation. We are waiting on HUD to provide guidance regarding how they want those investments to be reported. Nevertheless, you can see that we actually assisted over 1,700 persons during this past, uh, program year. Many of the programs included interim housing assistance, rehabilitation of affordable housing, tenant-based rental assistance, security deposit assistance, and other needs to respond, uh, to those persons who meet the income categories. Congregations Helping People, Meals on Wheels, provided by, uh, Marion Polk Food Share, and the Salem, um, Warming Center Network, which is supported by Midland Valley Community Action Agency through their Arches Program, and several faith-based community partners actually perform the activities for the city. The total clients, uh, served will, uh, is reflective of the reports that they submit to the city. This is a picture of some of the wonderful work that Marion Polk Food Share has done in regards to the seniors. One of the things that, uh, when COVID happened, seniors were not able to get out and about, uh, and pre-pandemic volunteer drivers delivered approximately 450 daily meals to homebound seniors and disabled adults in the Salem area. During the height of the pandemic, over 700 meals were delivered on a daily basis to the doors of the most vulnerable members of our community. CDBG resources were used to support this expanded community need. Under expanding affordable housing, the city projects and programs included Redwood Crossing, the first development in Salem, Oregon to offer permanent supportive housing to individuals experiencing homelessness or at risk of homelessness. This project increased affordable housing in Salem by 37 units. Resources were also invested in 29 housing units designated for veterans. Funding addressed physical access improvements and upgrade to electrical systems. Over four, over 300 new units are going to be planned, uh, and available in 2022, 2023, and 2024. Due to complexities of building affordable housing, that is why they're not included in this year's program, even though we have allocated millions of dollars to, uh, meet this goal. Under Goal Three, Promote Economic Development, the city worked with Garden. Garden is the provider of our North Salem Recycling Facility. There were several pieces of equipment that were obsolete and failing. The projects, uh, not only support Garden as a business, a nonprofit business, but also those persons who are, uh, individually dis- disabled, who they use as their employees. Um, the vulnerable population was identified in that 2024 Consolidated Plan, and we were happy to support Garden in its efforts. Next steps. Proceeding to tonight's hearing, a 15-day comment period, allowing citizens the opportunity to review and comment on the performance outcomes took place. As mentioned earlier, there was one individual who was to, uh, speak tonight, and we will still receive comments as this, uh, pro- this, um, report will be submitted to HUD by September the 30th. So if there are any other comments, we're happy to take them at that time. Before we leave, I really want to, um, thank our service providers for the work they did during some of the extremely trying circumstances. Uh, they were frontline, um, workers. They, uh, met the needs of our vulnerable communities, understanding what those families needed, but also taking care of themselves during the COVID pandemic and the ice storm as well as the fire. We also want to thank council for your leadership, as well as the city manager, uh, in your support of community initiatives to improve, um, uh, access to services for all of Salem's citizens. And with that, I'd like to turn it back over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Uh, I am gonna, just in case, uh, we have one person signed up, Dale Smith, apparently he is not here, but I wanted to just check. Okay. Now, where's Mr. Atchison? Or Amy? Do I close this then, Amy?
Yes, sir. You can go ahead and close the hearing.
I'll close the public hearing, and Counselor Hoy, do you have a motion on this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move City Council to approve the middle of the 2020, 2021 Program Year Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report CAPER with Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Programs to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Second.
Second by Stapleton. Any discussion?
No.
Nope? Okay, any, anyone?
Keep up the great work.
Yeah, it's great. Uh, the recorder, please call a roll.
Hey, Counselor Phillips?
Aye.
Counselor Leung?
Aye.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Stapleton?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye, okay, motion passes. So we'll move now to Special Orders of Business, uh, as Counselor Stapleton, uh, mentioned, 5A has been pulled, so we'll move to 3.2B. Counselor Anderson, your motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I move that, uh, City Council authorize the city manager to execute an LIHWA program agreement with MWVCAA to provide financial relief to qualified City of Salem water, wastewater, and stormwater customers.
Very good.
Second.
Second by Counselor Phillips.
Yeah, the, um, the, um, the acronym, the first one is Low Income Household Water Assistance Program, and that's something that the council, um, authorized and put into work to help folks who have problems with, uh, with meeting their utility bills. And the, uh, MWVCCAA, or VCAA, is the Midland Valley Community Action Agency, and that agency is the one the city contracts with. So people who have problems with their bills, they don't come to, um, uh, to the city directly. They're screened by, uh, uh, the Midland Valley Community Action Agency, and, um, then that's forwarded, forwarded on to the city. And, uh, from my perspective, I know that Alicia Blaylock is here, and maybe she could have anything else she wants to add. I will also say, I also pulled, uh, 3.3B, which is-
We'll take that up in a second.
Yeah, the same topic.
I think we got him, I think, I think we've reversed them, Mr. Mayor. I think that the motion was for 3.3B if I, if I followed it correctly.
Is that what he gave me?
Yeah. Oh, yes. I'm sorry, we did. I, I've got, uh, I, I don't know if you wanted to do, why don't we just go ahead with, uh, 3.3B? Thank you, uh, Counselor Hoy, and look at that, and then I'll go to 3.2B. Or do you want me-
I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
You did 3.2B?
Yes, I got both of them.
I apologize, but I just did the wrong, I just called the wrong number for you, so.
No, Mr. Mayor, you called the right number. He just read the motion for the second one that he pulled.
Oh, okay, well, good.
I have both of them.
Knock it off, Anderson.
So I don't know, I just-
So we're ready to vote, right?
Yeah, we're ready to vote on 3.3B, not 3.2B.
I was actually hoping to hear from Ms. Blaylock before we vote.
Yeah, I would too. I would too. I agree.
Okay, Alicia?
Uh, good evening, Alicia Blaylock, um, the Administration Division Manager in the Public Works Department. And we are really excited to partner with Midland Valley Community Action Agency on this. They have been a great partner to us this whole year. Um, if you remember, we've come back a couple of different times to expand the Emergency Assistance Program, which is the other report that you're going to talk about. And they have been a part of that. They actually did a pilot program with us for about $37,000 to provide some assistance because they wanted to demonstrate to the state that they could do it with water utilities. They had an existing electricity program, but they didn't have one for water, sewer, storm. So we partnered together last year. It's been very successful. Um, this is just an expansion of that, but it's coming from federal dollars, being released to the state and then going through local community action agencies. And then we have an outreach program planned, and some of you may have gotten an email today. We did some outreach again today on assistance programs, and we'll do more when we get the, uh, LEWA funding. So the, there's another meeting tomorrow with the State of Oregon to learn more about the program, but we're grateful for you to take this action early so we can get in at the beginning of the process.
Great. Thank you very much. Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say, Ms. Blaylock, I did receive the email today, and I appreciate it. You, you heard our feedback over the last many months, and I, I really appreciate you implementing that feedback. And I think it was, it was, it's good to get that word out there as many times as possible. So thank you for that. I appreciate it.
Counselor Anderson?
Yeah, I also just want to emphasize, now that I know which motion item I'm talking, this is, this is not money coming just from the city. It's federal money that's coming into us and we're helping to distribute it. So, uh, we ought to vote for this, uh, without any problem.
Okay, and Tom, give me again, which, give me the number on this again.
Uh, I, I am moving adoption of the staff recommendation in item 3.3B.
Okay.
3B.
Okay, got it. Thank you very much. Okay, everybody ready? If you call the roll.
Sure. Counselor Leung?
Aye.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Stapleton?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Phillips?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Motion passes. Okay, Counselor Anderson, 3.2B.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that the council adopts resolution, uh, 2021-36, restating the terms of the Emergency Utility Assistance Program, extending the effective date and expanding qualification criteria.
Second.
Second by Hoy.
And, uh, um, this is the companion piece to the one we just pulled. In order for us to do this, we have to authorize the, the agreement, uh, um, the Utility Assistance Program Emergency, uh, Emergency, um, Agreement to move forward. I didn't say that right, but this is the-
Sounds good, though. Yeah, that's good.
Of course, yeah. Okay. Of course, yeah. Okay.
Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have maybe a question or a comment from Ms. Blaylock. I want to give her an opportunity to speak, but my understanding is that we have authorized more funding than has been utilized by the residents of Salem for this emergency fund. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So what we're saying is, there's money on the table for residents who are having trouble with their utility bills. There's money on the table for them to utilize this program.
That's correct. We have a balance of about three hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars still. That's because we've had additional contributions, we've had donations, we've had the money, additional money from Mid Willamette Valley Community Action Agency. And so council originally authorized five hundred thousand. So we've distributed two hundred and sixty-two thousand since the beginning of the pandemic, which is fantastic.
Yeah. How, what?
Thank you for your excellent work on that.
Yeah, really. How, what, why is there so much on the table? Why is there more than half on the table? Mr. Fernandez, is the word out there, or what, what's going on?
Yeah, Mayor, Alicia can continue. She, she has the details on that.
Ah, good.
Well, I think sometimes it's difficult to get the word out. Not everybody qualifies. This is targeted for people who are income-qualified, and so sometimes that's an issue. And sometimes the folks who need assistance for other reasons don't actually have a utility account. So they might be renting. It's not, you know, if you don't, if the utility count is not in your name, it doesn't qualify. So.
Is there a timeline on this? I mean, is there, is there an expiration date on this program?
We will keep extending as long as the money is there.
Great. Okay. Counselor Nordike?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm curious about your outreach efforts to communities who don't speak English as their primary language. Can you share a little bit more about what we're doing to reach communities who don't speak English, communities of color, and other marginalized groups, make sure they're aware of these resources?
Thank you for asking that question. We also are working with Mid Willamette Valley Council or Community Action Agency to develop that program further, and we're working with our public information folks. We're open to any additional suggestions you might have to specific groups, but we're doing outreach to the folks that are, that are part of our, our normal program for outreach, like we did for the Climate Action Plan.
Yeah, Mayor, if I may, we also had extensive conversations. I'm sorry, I cannot remember his name right now.
Doctor Brown.
Doctor Brown from the Budget Committee. He reached out to us last year because he was very concerned about outreach to communities of color. As you know, he's a member of the local NAACP, and he was extremely helpful. Margot Williams, who is our customer service manager, and I met with him, and then Margot went and visited with the NAACP chapter, and we got a lot of information. And they gave us information, we provided information. So we are doing a tremendous amount of outreach to, to other communities, and we really appreciate Doctor Brown's efforts in that, in that regard.
How about some of the other communities? Counselor Leung, are you familiar with outreach on this?
I haven't heard of any outreach specifically to the Micronesian community. So I guess my question would be, like, do you have a demographic or even a general breakdown of who's been applying and been recipients of the funds so far?
We don't collect that kind of information about our account holders.
But even when they're applying for the fund, you don't ask for some of that information?
Well, we're not doing the qualification. It's going through the other agencies, so we don't have that information.
So would then we contact with the agencies that's collecting that data, be able to share that information?
I can find out.
Because I think that would be important to take a look at, especially if we are concerned about who is applying and who is not, and who is, who is actually aware of the program. Because I mean, we could do, for my organization, can only do so much information about it without, and then trying to provide some staff support to apply for it, but it just can't be us. And I mean, is there any other opportunities where we might be able to bring in that city staff to some of our events or opportunities to, to share this out? Because again, like as I mentioned during Counselor's comments, we have a large number of community members from different communities, and we're not providing the language support that these communities need.
Yeah, Counselor, we would absolutely welcome that. All we need to know is what are the, what are the events, or are the activities, or, you know? And we will absolutely have people there or provide whatever information, and we will certainly assist anyone who contacts us. Like Alicia said, we don't qualify, but we will certainly lead a customer to, to that assistance. The one thing that, that I always have to remind everyone is, it has to be a water account holder. So if they are renting an apartment, or if they are not the account owner, then this program doesn't help them.
Okay.
Right, and I understood that part, because we do have a few homeowners in, you know, who identifies Micronesian Pacific Islander, but I'm also aware of other communities that also are homeowners and making sure that they are aware of this resource. I mean, if I wasn't on City Council, for example, I wouldn't have probably have known about this. So I can't imagine for other folks who may not be as engaged with city-related activities, who, whatever reasons, just don't see this information. And I think we had talked about it before, but in, in one of the most recent, like, if people have the, the billing that's mailed to them, is there like a, something included in there, or some, even a statement on the billing that says, here, if you can't pay, please do this?
Yes. Yes, we have sent out several flyers to all of our account holders, and as soon as someone gets into trouble, you know, they're not, that, they're having trouble paying their bill, we immediately let them know that these assistance programs are available. So, so we do reach out to the, as soon as somebody, as soon as we see that they don't pay the bill, they are, we immediately make them aware of these programs.
Thank you.
I can offer a couple of other ideas of outreach efforts that we're doing. We've got inserts, we have outreach materials with social media, and we do have some radio spots that we've done. And we do provide the information on the late notices and in the inserts, as Director Fernandez said. So when you get a late notice, you also get the information about the programs.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. All right, any further discussion? If the recorder could please call the roll, then.
Counselor Gonzalez.
Aye.
Counselor Hoy.
Aye.
Counselor Nordike.
Aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Aye.
Counselor Stapleton.
Aye.
Counselor Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Phillips.
Aye.
Counselor Leung.
Aye.
Mayor Bennett.
Aye. Okay, motion passes. Counselor Hoy, three point three D.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move approval of the proposed fee for the Sidewalk Cafe On-Street Platform Program.
Second.
Second by?
I think I beat him to it.
Did you? Okay, Counselor Stapleton. It's gonna happen in your ward. We'll let you-
I'm gonna have to buy him a cup of coffee.
Yeah, you really are shutting him down tonight. Okay, what are we getting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I didn't want this item to be lost and on the, it kind of in the morass of the consent calendar. That's why I pulled it. I'm very supportive of it, but I wanted to give Ms. Rutherford an opportunity to highlight it and speak to the program and, and what it is doing, and what it, more, sometimes more importantly, what it's not doing. So, Ms. Rutherford, I would love to hear some of the highlights so the public can be more aware of this program.
Thank you for the opportunity. Kristen Rutherford, I'm the city's urban development director. And this is, is, what we're bringing forward tonight is the fee that will be associated with the on-street dining platforms. So I'm gonna go back in history a little bit here, back to the May two thousand and twenty timeframe, when we were in a mad scramble to try to assist the downtown restaurants in response to COVID, when we were in the extreme shutdown phase. We started with some street closures, we started with allowing tents to go up, out, out in parking spaces within the downtown so that businesses could keep in operation during the worst of the shutdown. This was, you know, a real rapid response. We put this program together initially within just a couple of weeks. We had great participation and cooperation from our Public Works Department and our traffic engineers, and working with the Chamber of Commerce and the Main Street Organization to do outreach to the businesses. The Planning Department stepped up with, you know, modified approval processes for, or these waivers for tents that were under four hundred square feet so that we could get this up and operating as quickly as we could. So, you know, we proceed through the next year with the tent structures, and we provide, had grant programs to help the people purchase tents and outdoor heaters within the downtown and other parts of the community. So, you know, this has all worked pretty well through the last year. But as we are starting to come out of COVID, we're getting more interest from some businesses in having a permanent program with actual dining platforms and not tents. We are also, you know, having concerns from businesses that aren't restaurants about impacts to parking spaces downtown. So what we brought forward earlier this summer was this new program that would put a timeline for removing tents and then creating a new replacement program that would be ongoing in nature, that would have a little bit more structure and more guidelines. You know, a lot of the complaints that we've received about the tents are things like, parking's not available, and I never see anybody in this tent. You know, maybe they're using it three or four days a week, you know, in the evenings, that sort of thing. So with the program that we brought forward to council for approval earlier this summer, we had parameters around the days of use, a number of meals, so that had to be open at least five days a week and for at least two meals a day. So that if we're trading off parking spaces, we're trading it off for some more regular use, or, you know, would have value to the business and to the community. So that was approved in May. And then in July, we came back to council with an urban renewal grant program that can provide up to twenty thousand dollars. It's a, it's a fifty-fifty match, up to twenty thousand dollars of urban renewal funds to help build a permanent structure. We have a process in place through our Public Works Department where businesses can get a revocable license. We have created some guidelines for what platforms, how they should be built, and what they should look like, to try to streamline the whole process for the businesses. So that all was adopted and put into place this summer. Now we've got businesses that are going through that application process and the design process, and the question that's been coming up is, will there be a fee for this? You know, and maybe not now, but at some point, will there be a fee for it, and what will that fee be? And so they, they wanted some assurance about what future costs they could incur as they invest in a platform. So that's why we're here now with this fee proposal. The fee won't be implemented until next July. And so, you know, this isn't something that's gonna be an immediate burden for our businesses. They've got time to plan for it, but a lot of them have really wanted the assurance about what that fee would be before they make a significant investment in a platform. So that's why we're here this evening.
Very good. Any, yes, Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Ms. Rutherford, for that clarification. I appreciate it. And I suppose, heaven forbid, that if we're still in the middle of a pandemic next July, we could postpone it again, but let's, let's not go there. But that's an option. But I just wanted to say that I think this program has enhanced our downtown. I, I love the option of being able to be outside. I love the, I think it adds energy to that, to downtown, and I think it's been a real positive, and I appreciate all the staff's work on it. So thank you.
Very good. Anyone else? Yes, Counselor Nordike?
Thank you. I wanted to hear from Director Rutherford. Can you tell me a little bit more about the outreach efforts to the restaurants who are currently taking advantage of this program? I'm curious to hear if any of them really balked at this proposal. I do point out, in case people have not had an opportunity to read the report, the report says the annual cost would be under eighteen hundred bucks. I mean, I know when you're a restaurant, every dine counts, right? But I was pleased to see if, if it's less than eighteen hundred dollars, that, that doesn't sound as bad as I initially thought it might be when I first saw this. So that was my comment, but then I want to give you an opportunity now to respond to my question. And here, what did the restaurateurs say when, about this proposal?
So there have been a number of emails that have gone out to the restaurants, both about the end of the tent program, which is terminating October first, and about the new program. I have not heard back from any of the restaurants with any questions or concerns about the fee. So the fee is based, it's tied to the parking tax that our downtown businesses pay, and it's about the cheapest real estate you're gonna find in downtown.
Yeah, it sure looks that way to me. Thank you.
Okay. Any other question? Oh, yes, Counselor Stapleton.
Yes, I don't have a question. I just wanna thank Counselor Hoy for bringing this forward. I'm new at this, so I am watching and learning, just to highlight it, because it does deserve to be highlighted, and all the work that the city staff is doing to make this possible for our downtown, to keep it thriving and welcoming and vibrant. It is noticed and it is appreciated. I'm really excited for this program to move forward.
Yeah, I really agree as well. I get a lot of comment, whether it's email, or just walking on the street, or going into restaurants or businesses, just how positive people feel about the downtown and the way things are going. And this is a big part of that, and the work that Ms. Rutherford and her staff have done really deserves, I think, the strong support for this next step in this program. It's gonna be very interesting to see how this moves forward, so.
So Mayor, I, I want to thank you for that, and thank you for giving the credit to me and my staff, but I, I don't want to share that credit with our partners in Public Works. Kevin Hopkin-
I'm sorry, I forgot.
Joined at the hip with Kevin, probably much to his chagrin. And Leo in their Public Works Roads Crews, you know, putting barricades up, moving barricades here, moving them there. They have been just a tremendous support in this.
Yeah, that has worked really well, really well. Okay, anyone else? Okay, Amy, if you'd call the roll.
Counselor Hoy.
Aye.
Counselor Nordike.
Aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Aye.
Counselor Stapleton.
Aye.
Counselor Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Phillips.
Aye.
Counselor Leung.
Aye.
Counselor Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mayor Bennett.
Aye. Okay, motion passes. Counselor Lewis, three point three F.
Oh, lucky me. Before I make the motion, I'd like to ask staff a couple of questions, if I could.
Let's get a motion on the table, if you wouldn't mind.
Well, actually, the answer to at least one question will depend on what the motion is.
Well, it's really out of order for me. Go ahead. I'll give you a-
Okay. Thanks, Gretchen, for, for coming. I, I gotta tell you, before I start this, you are my hero. I've never seen anybody perform at such a high level on, on difficult issues, month after month after month. So I appreciate it. My one question is, in the report, it says that upon council approval, staff will work through several issues that will need to be addressed prior to opening the site. I don't need to know necessarily what those issues are, but I, I'm curious about how much time you think it would take to address those issues.
Thank you. I wish I had a more concrete answer. It includes things like ordering the microshelters and whether we'll hit supply chain or contractor availability to, to construct those, although the community has stepped forward with the purchase of those. With ordering and providing fencing around the perimeter of the site to provide privacy for all those involved, securing and placing porta-potties and the shower truck stuff that we're gonna need. It's those sorts of things.
Do you have to get permission from, it, it looks like on the map that we're closing the north end entrance into the Park and Ride, and there'll be a gate across that street, correct?
Yeah, that is, that is what it looks like, and, and we are talking with ODOT about that. We had been hoping to provide services on the ODOT property, or hoping to propose that, and that wasn't a choice, and so now that is what that looks like. So yes, that's one of the activities.
So you need to get permission from ODOT to, to close that entrance off?
I'm not clear about that. That's actually something we're discussing, is, is whether permission is important. We've certainly notified, but permission's another question.
Yeah, when you mess with ODOT's roads, they, they want to give permission.
Let's try a motion here.
Yeah, I, I move that this issue be sent back to staff to complete a more thorough report, and that that report or outreach be communicated to the folks that are- And that that report or outreach be communicated to the folks that are within one quarter mile of the site. Um, and to have that, uh, brought back to council as soon as possible.
I don't hear a second.
Second.
Okay, second from.
Thank you. I may speak to the motion. Um, you know, I'm not sure how many of the 200 emails that were sent to the city council on this issue have been read. But the common denominator for me was, um, the, the lack of knowledge about what this is. We've heard it several times tonight. We need to tell the story. When you talk to people in West Salem about homeless camps, they immediately think of Wallace Marine Park. They don't have the understanding of what happened at the, um, fairgrounds. They don't have an understanding of the success of the Portland Road Site. And I believe that that information needs to be disseminated to the West Salem community. So they will appreciate what we're doing rather than be suspicious of it. And I recognize that this puts this off for a month maybe. But there's going to be work that needs to be done in the meantime. I think we have time to do both, uh, rather than pass the motion tonight.
I guess the, the question I'd have is for either Gretchen or Mr. Powers is understanding what this would do in terms of the supply chain issues, in terms of when would this then open? Uh, assuming everybody finds out, you know, how this works. Uh, as, as the council is describing it, what, does this put us off or see, what's this do, this motion?
I would need to do an analysis of what a, a half or a quarter mile radius would do. We did, um, identify a list of properties and adjacencies and I made telephone calls to those. But I don't have a good sense of if that, if there are, if there are any in the quarter mile radius that I didn't already, um, give a phone call to. I'd need to look at the map to confirm that. Um.
Yeah, apparently what, what the emails that we received tell us is that Salem Town, um, is within a quarter mile and it is from the site. And, um, and if I understand the emails that we got from the residents of Salem Town, they, they, they don't understand. It's not that they're against it. I don't believe they are. They just don't understand it. Um, and I think that communication is important to get the buy-in. As we can tell by the 200 emails that we received over the weekend, um, there's confusion there.
Thank you. And I regret not contacting the Salem Town organization and residents and would be delighted to do that. I can also learn from them about important things to consider as we do, um, you know, the site planning. So that would be an important step. I'm, I'm agreeing completely, of course.
Councilor Stapleton?
Thank you. Um, Councilor Lewis, I guess my question is, do you think that this will change the minds and the attitudes about this proposed project? I mean, it, you just alluded to that you think that it will, in fact.
I, I absolutely do. Um, I, I've lived in this neighborhood for 21 years. I have a great deal of respect for the folks in West Salem. And, and what I've heard, um, along with about the emails the council got, the other 50 I got were, I don't know what's going on. I just heard about this. What is this? What is it going to happen? They, they jumped to the conclusion of the damage that could be done. But I believe that it's a genuine interest of knowledge that will satisfy the majority of the folks. There's always going to be people, no matter what part of Salem they're in. There's always going to be people who will say, we don't want them here. But I don't believe that that's the true sentiment of West Salem.
I, I will say, having, um, having the Portland Road Site, um, I think it's, uh, less than half a mile from my place here.
Yeah.
Um, we, we had a lot of concern and comments from the neighborhood association in that area. And Gretchen had meetings with them and, and myself included. And I don't think that the, the, the attitude about it really changed until there was a lived experience of having it there and experiencing that their, their fears were put to rest through the experience. I'm not sure there was anything I could have said beforehand that would have eased things. And so that's, that's where I'm at right now, just kind of, and the fact that it's just, uh, winter is coming. Um, I, I feel like we need to, to move on things and any kind of delay, um, for me is, is hard to think about, but I also understand your need for more communication. I am with you there 100%. But I also think that both of those things could go simultaneously, you know, starting the, the process and starting the up to up communication at the same time. But that, those are just what my thoughts are right now.
Okay, Councilor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Councilor Lewis, I appreciate the, you know, your advocacy for more communication. I think that's a great idea. I don't, I don't support the idea, however, of delaying this while that happens. You know, as a resident of East Salem for the past, uh, 18 or so years, you know, we, we've carried, uh, east and northeast. They've carried the burden, uh, for homelessness for a long time, it seems. And I know that, that we've had the Wallace Marine Park situation and people have had a, a negative experience with that. I appreciate it. But homelessness is the number one priority for our residents and, and solving it is the number one priority. And this, um, takes us towards that. And I was struck during the public testimony tonight that people, you know, they said, oh, I, I support it. And this is not NIMBY and I, I really want you to cite this thing as long as it's not NIMBY, but as long as it's not in my backyard, then I really support it. And I was also struck that we're targeting folks who are 55 and older and it's, that are, that are, that are unsheltered. And that the folks who are 55 and older at Salem Town who are sheltered are the ones coming out against it. And, and that was really disappointing to me. And, um, I, I think that we can do both of these things at the same time. I think Ms. Bennett can go forward with community outreach while we're also planning for this thing and not have a month delay. And that's what I would like to do tonight.
Councilor, are you proposing a, a, a motion then?
I would, uh, propose staff recommendation.
Substitute, substitute motion?
I could either substitute or, or if this other one doesn't pass, we could go for this, uh, the next one. Either way.
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to hear that as a substitute motion for staff recommendation. Is there a second? Is that right? Second by, uh, Councilor Phillips. Okay. Council, Councilor Nordike? Uh, you're, you're, uh, sorry, that's okay. I didn't think what to call that, but your red thing's still on, yeah.
So, um, I'll support the substituted motion, spoiler alert. Um, I, I share in the sentiment for enhanced communication and that can and should happen simultaneously. But I would also point out that it's, it's, I think a lot of the fears seem to do with, one, an assumption of no security. We have a great track record for providing safe and secure, managed and temporary campsites all over the city. This is yet again, another temporary managed campsite with 24/7 staff. Another point, it seems to assume that there already are a number of persons experiencing homelessness in West Salem. Do we want them on the streets or do we want them in a managed campsite where there is safety and security for everyone involved, themselves included? Where there are folks keeping an eye on them. As DJ Vincent said, this isn't a drop-in. There is an assessment. And by the way, we know from DJ Vincent, we know from our community partners that shelters are a proven waystation from temporary shelter to jobs and permanent housing. If you want less homeless individuals in West Salem, you should support a temporary managed campsite to get people that stability, the job connection, the services connection, and give them an opportunity to right their own ship, so to speak, so they can stabilize and rebuild their own lives. So folks are already homeless in West Salem without that kind of security and oversight that this camp will provide. If anything, this might increase safety for those living next door to persons experiencing homelessness in the West Salem area. So I hear the concerns, but we've got a proven track record of these camps reducing safety concerns in the area. So I will be voting in favor.
Councilor Lewis?
Just a quick comment. We, we do have a proven track record. That's what we should be proud about. The only problem is we've done a bad job of communicating that to the citizens, so they don't know the success that we've had.
Do you, Councilor Lewis or Gretchen, uh, do, do you have confidence that, that this communication? I think Councilor Hoy spoke to it, that we can do two things at once. Move forward, get some of the basics that we need to do to move forward in order to make commitments and uh, allay the concerns and legitimate concerns we heard, uh, tonight that are really functioning, I think, from a lack of information. Uh, in a lot of cases, a real misunderstanding of what 55 plus means, what managed camps. Man, and, and I actually object to the idea of being called camps. That's really not what they are. They're really managed, uh, communities in the way they're done. But can you, can you take us through that, uh, one of you? What do you think, Jim? Can you have confidence that two things can happen at once? I, I think Gretchen can do it. I, I've watched her do it. That's the only reason I'm saying that, I guess.
You know, uh, I would say if anybody can do it, Gretchen can. No pressure.
Yeah.
I.
She's, and she, she lives for the pressure, Jim.
And I, and I gotta say this, um, it may not get me any Christmas cards from the folks in West Salem, but I've been talking about this site for over two years. Um, it, it is a logical site based on what you have in a managed camp. It's an excellent, excellent idea. I'm just, I, I'll be concerned, uh, at least until we have the opportunity for the outreach. I'll be concerned that people are going to take it as something other than what it is. And, and that's unfortunate. But, um, I'll go with the will of the council.
Okay. I would hope too, Gretchen, I'll just share my, my thoughts on it with you. And I'm, I, other counselors are more than welcome, but that you would at some point in the next X number of days or months or weeks, kind of report back to us on your outreach and how that's going. I, I'm really concerned that, uh, Salem Town may not have had, uh, an opportunity to meet with you and DJ and really hear what this is about. I, I think that's just really, and, and, you know, being one of those people getting further and further over 70, the sense of vulnerability is real. It really is, particularly when you see populations that feel, um, unmanaged and, and kind of, you know, potentially causing problems. So I, I, I really hope you can come back to us and talk a little about how that's going. I think that'd be very helpful if this motion passes. Okay? Yes, Councilor Phillips?
Yeah, I, I plan to sub, uh, I plan to support the substitute motion, but I understand that, that Councilor Lewis is in a, a difficult position. Um, just with the location of this and that, you know, communication is a real thing. But I too have, have trust and faith in Gretchen Bennett. And I guess I, I would ask the community members who are concerned, if any of them, I don't mean this sarcastically, I mean it seriously. If any of the community members had the chance to tour the pavilion. I know that when I toured the pavilion and saw the success, you know, in firsthand, it, it just changed hearts and minds. I mean, the, you know, managed sheltering, managed communities is a totally different concept than what most of our community has seen with the unmanaged camping at Wallace Marine or Cascade Gateway. So this is not what people think it is. It is by and large very safe, very well managed. Uh, I heard DJ Vincent say that, you know, 21 out of just over 100 people got back to work and 10 or 15 of them, you know, ended the cycle of homelessness in just two months. So I, I'm very encouraged and my understanding as well is that we're going to get something like this in every single ward. So this isn't the first ward. It won't be the last. Uh, I'm looking forward to it everywhere.
Yes, Councilor Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. And, you know, one of the things I wanted to add is, I think we're talking about two things. Cause one thing is the managed camping within the fenced area. And I think what people's concern are and, um, is they're, they're, um, these people aren't prisoners, right? So they're not there 24/7. They, you know, they go to work, they visit friends, they, they walk, right? And so the walk, the path they're going to choose is, you know, they're going to go down, you know, to, um, they get closer to Orchard Heights, that area, they're going to access services, 7-Eleven stores. They're going to go the other way, you know, it's a little further down where there's a gas station down there. Um, they're going to try to go to the park. So it's, it's, um, it's what happens outside of that, that I don't think anybody can guarantee the safety of the neighbors. Um, and, you know, if, I'm not sure if people realize this, but the shooting last week was at a managed parking spot here in my ward. There was a shooting last week. Luckily, nobody was killed. And, uh, the person was arrested luckily, but it did happen within the camp. You know, so there, there is no guarantee, right? And let's make sure that people don't think that's what we're trying to offer. But it's also, it's the people as they're getting accustomed to this new location, they're going to travel. You know, and even today, we're seeing remnants in Ward 5 Northeast of, um, of, uh, these encampments that have been dissolved. Especially the one ODOT cleared at Market Street, Underpass. And 90% of the calls and discussions I have with my neighbors are the results of those passing. You know, that weren't well managed outside of, in other words, um, increased garbage pickup. You know, we're hearing from homeless advocates that porta potties aren't being maintained, that garbage is not being picked up. So that's, I think, where a lot of people's frustration is not really necessarily what happens inside. Cause I did tour the state facility, the state fairgrounds facility. Uh, but it's what happens outside of that and then the long-term effects of it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Uh, what's your thoughts on the motion then, Jose? You were the second on, uh, Councilor Lewis. Are you?
Well, you know, I, I can see which way the wind is blowing, but it just seems like the neighbors haven't, enough neighbors haven't had enough time to discuss and negotiate this. And I think it was because of a, a Statesman Journal, uh, report. I think that's how people found out. You know, so, um, whether they're directly impacted or not, I don't know exactly where everybody lives, but that's what seemed to have drawn that. I mean, we can't reach everybody through this door knocking. It's impossible, but I think that's where.
Yeah, okay. Hey, anyone else? Um, hey, you ready to vote then on Councilor Hoy's motion? If the recorder, please call the roll.
Councilor Nordike.
Aye.
Councilor Lewis.
Aye.
Councilor Stapleton?
Aye.
Councilor Anderson?
Aye.
Councilor Phillips?
Aye.
Councilor Leung?
Aye.
Councilor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilor Hoy?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye, motion passes. Okay, thank you. And Gretchen, we will look forward to, to hearing more from you and, uh, and if you see impediments to this, I hope you'll keep us posted that, that this, all of a sudden, this one doesn't work. We've looked at others that didn't work, like windows to the west and had the wherewithal to step back. If, if this has unworkable problems, I hope we're told. I really do.
Will do, certainly.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on then to information reports. And we, anybody got any questions? Councilor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a, a motion on item 6E.
Okay, why don't you go ahead?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to direct staff to provide city council a report on implementation of the SPRAB, SPRAB recommendations, including any modifications to the proposed changes to parks' administrative policies.
Second out there?
Second.
Second by Councilor Phillips.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this, this SPRAB did some great work here. I really appreciate their effort. I, I read, uh, the entire report and I think they did some, they had some great methodology. And I appreciate the, the breadth and the depth of the work that they did. I think that now that we have these recommendations, it's appropriate for our staff to take a look at them, compare them to, uh, our current policies, um, and really bring forward, uh, a report to us on what, uh, on how some of these might be implemented, if, if some of them, for some reason, aren't, uh, maybe, uh, they don't judge them to be appropriate for Salem, for whatever reason, they tell us that too. I just think that, uh, it's, you know, this is kind of one of those fine lines with, is this our work or is this the city manager's work? And, uh, I think it's certainly a partnership and this kind of takes. And I think it's certainly a partnership. And this kind of takes the work of one of our advisory committees and runs it through that staff filter and then back to us to consider again in the future. And I just think that's probably the best way to do this.
Very good. Counselor Nordike?
I'm supportive of the motion, although I suspect that city staff were very much involved. The SPRAB doesn't operate in a bubble. They do operate with the support of city staff. So I would take this as more of like a secondary look at it. But I'm supportive of making sure that it's been vetted by the city manager's office, the city attorney's office. I know that they made some recommendations about things, about how people use our parks safely. I just hope that we can get word back soon because we've been hearing concerns about unpermitted park activity, people using hateful things, forms of intimidation, harassment. And that's gone on for far too long. So I hope that we can get that input back from the city as soon as possible.
Yeah, good. I'm very hopeful that what we'll get back is really an implementation plan for them. This is really, in my, I kind of go along with at least part of what Counselor Hoy mentioned, that unless there's major code changes, this is something that can be done all inside of our existing code and be done in a managerial way rather than to bring us, bring us into it with major changes, unless it's necessary to implement some of the changes that are in there that really require changes to city code. I hope, and I know Mr. Atchison will be one of the closely involved advisors to the manager and the parks folks as they put this together. Counselor Leung, are you signaling me? Nope?
No, no, no. I was just fixing my.
Your thing?
Yeah. Yeah, my mic, sorry.
Your mic, yeah, thanks. Okay. The recorder please call a roll.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Stapleton?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Phillips?
Aye.
Counselor Leung?
Aye.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Okay. Motion passes. Does anyone else have anything from the information reports? Okay, we'll just move forward then to our first reading. Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to conduct first reading of the ordinance and direct staff to amend the ordinance prior to second reading to require applicants for multifamily projects with 100 units or more to provide at least 15% of the units at rents affordable to the household that 80% of the average median income or less for the duration of the incentive or meet at least two of the public benefit criteria.
Second. Second by Anderson. Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a program that we've had a couple of conversations about. I appreciated the staff report and that their recommendation was to maintain status quo. But I heard pretty loud and clear from my colleagues that we have an appetite for doing something more. And so this motion is kind of, was kind of the, it's on page seven of their staff report. It was kind of an alternate that they, that staff felt was workable. And I feel like it's definitely capture, it definitely captures the sentiment on what we need to be doing here in town and also what my colleague, most of my colleagues want to be doing, and that's increasing the number of affordable housing or also increasing the number of public benefits. But I think we, we see this tax incentive as a pretty big deal and just meeting one criteria doesn't really get us to where, it doesn't seem equitable. So I think that this motion gets us to a better place and a better outcome. So that's where I'm at with it.
Thank you. Ms. Rutherford, can you kind of, you gave us this alternative. Is this will not deter us from having more affordable housing, will it? Or will it?
Well, it's, you know, it's hard to say. And the reason I stayed with the recommendation to make no change as opposed to strongly recommending this option two was because it's such an uncertain time right now, you know? And we see this with our housing authority projects as costs are going through the roof. We've got labor challenges. We've got supply chain challenges. Dealing with affordable housing and having the property management services to do the wage verifications and everything that goes along with that is outside of the wheelhouse of a lot of developers. And so given these other kind of externalities that developers have no control over right now in terms of these other costs, that's my hesitancy with moving forward at this point in time with adding these additional criteria, because it's just a strange time out there right now.
Counselor Anderson, you had your hand up?
Yes, I do, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. I second the motion and I support it. And I was, I had planned to vote against the motion as extended to us because we've had eight projects in 45 years. So that's one every five and a half years, almost one every six years. So this program hasn't really provided a lot of benefit, even in the boom times from '76 to now, when we didn't have the externalities that Director Rutherford is talking about. So I just think it wasn't an effective program, but I would rather see it be effective in some way as Counselor Hoy suggested than just not effective at all. So that's why I'm in favor of it.
Okay, Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I guess just to sort of respond to Ms. Rutherford's concerns, this is a long-term policy. I think it's 10 years. And so if we have a couple of more years of difficult times or something, this policy is going to outlast that difficult time. If there's a cycle and we're in a maybe not so great place right now, but at some point, I think we're going to come out of it. And I think we need a solid policy in place. And, you know, they don't have to do the affordable housing. They can do two public benefits. You know, they have, there's alternatives here. It's not a, it's not a one-size-fits-all. There are options here to get to that place. And I just think it's the right way to go, given the long-term nature of this policy. So.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, if the recorder please call a roll.
Me, 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 me.
Who's me? Oh, there you are.
Sorry.
Oh, that's okay. I know. I'm glad you said something. Thanks. I thought you were messing with your mic again.
No, no, no. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I'm really conflicted about this particular proposal. You know, one of the biggest things, as it's been reiterated several times by other counselors, is that, you know, we need more affordable housing options, especially for working families. And I'm glad that there's like a push towards like increasing what we're expecting from developers for accountability. I wish it was actually more than just two public needs, perhaps even like five public needs, giving more variety and options. And then the other comment was, I think it was 15%, that would be for affordable housing. And again, when we're looking at what affordable housing consists of and how after that time period, it's going to go up to market rate, what does that exactly mean? Especially when we are wanting to ensure that we're not pricing out families that can't afford to keep up with increases of rent. I mean, I've been a, I was a renter for, you know, pretty much most of my life. And to see the rent continue to increase and the impact it has on people and now that we're dealing with people who can't even catch up with their back payment of rent, what it means for them in the future. That's why I'm cautiously optimistic about what this proposal brings, but I wish there was more oomph to it.
Thank you, Counselor. Okay, anyone else? If the recorder then would please call a roll.
So I believe I need to still read the title of the ordinance.
Oh, God, I'm sorry, Amy.
That's okay. Ordinance Bill Number 321, An Ordinance Relating to Extension of the Multiple-Unit Tax Incentive Program, Amending SRC 2.800, SRC 2.830, and 2.835. Counselor Stapleton?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Phillips?
Aye.
Counselor Leung?
Aye.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Okay, motion passes. Okay, go to 7.1B. Amy, go ahead and.
Ordinance Bill Number 1021, An Ordinance Declaring and Proclaiming Certain Territory Located at 681 Reese Hill Road Southeast Annex to the City of Salem, Prescribing Salem Area Comprehensive Plan Map Designation, Prescribing Zoning, and Withdrawing the Territory from the Salem Suburban Rural Fire Protection District.
Okay. Counselor Leung, this is your ward. Do you want to make this motion?
I might make a motion to move forward as directed by staff recommendation.
Great, thank you.
Second.
Second by Hoy. Anyone want to speak to this? Counselor Leung, did you? Okay. Right, if the recorder please call a roll.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Phillips?
Aye.
Counselor Leung?
Aye.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Stapleton?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Okay, motion passes. Is there any further business? I don't see any.
I think we have somebody signed up under number eight, if I'm not mistaken.
Under number eight? I already had him. I took him, I took him in the front end. It's Mr. Greenwood from the distillery, okay?
Got it. Thank you. Sorry.
No, no, that's no problem. Okay, if there's no further business, we're adjourned.
For more videos and for more information, go to CapitalCommunityMedia.org and follow us on social media.